All set? All right. Thank you, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen meeting for May 29th. I'll go over the agenda briefly. And I apologize, I'm not sure why citizens input is not on this agenda. It wasn't intentionally removed, but it should be on here. So we'll start out with citizens input. And then it's as close to seven as we can get. Bill Yuchner, in the School Business Administrator, is going to come in to present a refund check for the high school renovations. At 7:05, Roger Hill, Dave LaLiberdy, and representatives from National Grid are here to discuss some of the updates of what's happened in the protocol from the power outages that we had. At 7:30, State Representative Jay Barrows will be here, is here, to discuss the amendment to the regional wastewater treatment. At eight o'clock, we're going to have a brief discussion on the housing production plan initiated through the planning board. At 8:10, we're going to have a Labor Council advisor opinion regarding collective bargaining. At 8:20, we're going to be presented with the Foxborough Fire Department's overtime study that's been initiated early this year, last year. And at 9:30, we're going to go into executive session to discuss negotiations with union and non-union personnel, and also, second item, deployment of security personnel. And then we'll come back into open session just to close. So, Mark, do you want to lead us in the Pledge of Eignance?
The Pledge of Eignance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just quickly, before we go into citizens input, what I'd like to do is just give a couple of updates on things that have happened over the last couple of weeks. Not for discussion, but just to kind of keep everybody up to date. And then also, just to give you a little preview of some of the stuff that we have coming up in the following meetings. First of all, thank you for whoever came to participate in the Memorial Day ceremony and the Memorial Day presentation on Monday. I thought it was spectacular, and I think we had a good showing. It was a beautiful day. And I'm hoping every year it just gets stronger and stronger. June 9th, we have Founder's Day coming up, which is not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. And there's a lot of people working hard on that. One of the initiatives that we recently started, or will start, was having open office hours for selectmen. And we're doing that because trying to squeeze things in on citizens input in front of a microphone and camera, timing may be off, and people may feel uncomfortable. So, as the town hall is, it's not overly glamorous with space, so we have found a couple of slots that we will have office open, office hours. We're going to have at least one selectman, but no more than two selectmen. And it's for the public to come in in two-hour increments, anytime, just to come in, stay a minute, stay five minutes, stay an hour, just to bring up any issues or questions that you might have. I think Jenny did a nice job coordinating a couple hours here at Town Hall. So they're going to be the first Tuesday of every month. The morning session is going to be 10 o'clock to noon time, and the evening session is 5 to 6:30. So it may end right before a selectman's meeting we have every other week as a selectman's meeting. And the reason that we're having the evening session on Tuesdays is because Town Hall is open Tuesday night. So if there's an issue or a question, we can bring you around to some of the different departments that might be here after hours. Some of the quick things that we have coming up next session, we're going to be talking about a lot of the concerts and sporting events to grant those permits, the Country Music Festival. We will be doing the Town Manager's Annual Review at the next meeting on the 12th. And on June 26th, we will be talking about the following year's goals and objectives. And then next week, we have a special meeting where we're going to be reviewing all the packets and interviewing the Town Council. So, briefly, that was what that was about. Anyone from citizens input? If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. As Chairman of the Conservation Commission, it gives me great pleasure to invite you and the general public, that's the entire board, to the dedication of the William O'Hocken Junior Memorial on the Salee property on Main Street. The dedication will be held this coming Saturday, June 2nd, at 2:00 PM. The area is located across the street from Snow Supply and the Sunoco Gas Station, for those who don't know exactly where it is. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank Betty Ekstrom and members of the Foxborough Garden Club for planting and maintaining the garden there. Also, many thanks to Pete Sobel and the Highway Department for rebuilding the fence around the parking area. I'm looking forward to seeing you there Saturday on Main Street. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. I know you guys worked very hard on that over the last year. Anybody else from citizens input? Sure.
Randy Scollins. I don't know if you had already mentioned this, Mr. Chairman, but the Boydin Library is having a community event beam signing this Saturday morning at the library from 9:00 AM to noon to commemorate the final laying of the beams at the library. Should be a great event for everybody to go and sign the beam.
So anyone's invited? You can write your name on it and goes up?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Oh, write somebody else's name. Anybody else for citizens input? Okay, so, we're going to invite Bill Yuchner from the School Business Administration. Sorry, who is the School Business Administrator?
I wanted to take this opportunity, we've been talking about the high school project for a little while, and Beverly, if you'd like to come up? Paul Jagir. One of the issues that we talked about, obviously, is there's an amount of money that's coming back to the town from the project itself. But the second thing that we were kind of charged with by the school committee was to make the building as efficient as possible. In doing so, the building committees had experience in the past, and we've gone after rebates as part of that process. Paul Jagir represents Columbia Gas, and this is the final stage of the rebate process, but because we put in all of the energy management systems within that high school that control the temperatures throughout the building, give us the ability to really kind of maintain it, but not have to over-exert the gas pressures onto the building itself, that program allowed us to apply for some rebates. And as part of that program, and as part of the school committee's charter to basically try to pull this building together the way it is, Columbia Gas is here to represent and give us a check for $100,000 to go back into the general fund. And this is part of what we've been talking about. We had originally said we'd have about 132. We received 32 previously from National Grid. This is the balance of the $100,000, and we finally achieved it, and we're there. So...
My role tonight is to remind everybody that we took it as a charge upon ourselves and a promise to the community that the school committee would move forward with the idea of making the most energy-efficient possible plan. My role tonight is to shine all the light on the building committee. If it had not been for their extra diligence in doing all the research and making us aware of these kinds of programs and rebates, we never would have been able to do it. So the accolades don't go to the school committee. The accolades go to all the hard work and the many, many hours that the building committee has spent on our behalf, and the children, and the taxpayers of Foxborough.
Fantastic.
I think on top of that, I'd like Paul to speak quickly, but the other side of it is that they work very closely with us when we go into these programs, and they actually give us the ideas of everywhere we can go looking for, and they present the different things. So I think, you know, Paul, if you'd like to say something too.
No, on behalf of Columbia Gas in Massachusetts, I congratulate Bill and the staff for putting in the systems that they put in. We're pleased to give you this $100,000 as an incentive, it was an agreed-upon incentive for having made that promise to go high efficiency in the boiler plant, in the energy management system.
Paul, thank you very much. Why don't we just go around the table if you have something to add before we get into that?
No, congratulations, good job, of course, and we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate all the work that the building committee did in working with the school committee for this. Thank you.
Feel exactly the same way. I know all the time you've put into it and really appreciate it, especially, you know, the permanent municipal and school building committee. Incredible, incredible job. Congratulations.
Once again, the town's led by great volunteers like yourself, Bill. I mean, your committee has been outstanding in every project in this town, always, always below estimated costs, I think, in typically every job. And we really appreciate it. Paul, we appreciate all the, you know, rebates that Columbia Gas, Massachusetts offers to the town for planning well. So it's a very successful thing, and Mike, all your people, I mean, fantastic job. Thank you very much.
And remember, Bill belongs to the school committee now.
Well, I think we can give a round of applause. There's some...
Thank you.
Hang on, Paul. I guess you present that to Beth, and Jimmy, right? Get in there.
The wrong names on this. I'm going to send this to Bill in Afghanistan, and he'll say, "Go get a real one, Mom."
I don't see many checks for $100,000, personally speaking.
Thank you, Beth. You can come up?
Have fun spending.
I wish all items could be that easy. That was very nice. Now, the next up is representatives from National Grid, Dave LaLiberdy from our Tree and Park, and also Roger Hill, our DPW director. And the reason that we're having them here today is, as many of you know, we went through a couple phases of having no electricity during storm events, and we didn't want that to go forgotten. And this meeting is not to go back and see what people didn't do, or what their responsibilities fell short, or if they even did. I had asked National Grid, almost with Marcy Reed, the discussions early on, to come back to the Board of Selectmen once they felt like they had their arms around the next four or five-year plan, explain to the town what the protocol is for cutting trees. Is it skied of ground? Is it 10 feet away? Is it private? Is it, you know, whose responsibility? Is it the town's or National Grid's? So, and I recently met with Dave LaLiberdy, he shared with me some of your plans and all the stuff that National Grid has been doing, really from the day after the storm up till now. So I thought it would be a good opportunity, if you just wanted to give us an update, and more so so the town could understand what's going on. And Roger, if you wanted to come up, or someone from, a couple of people from National Grid?
My name's Dave LaLiberdy, from the Tree and Park Department, Superiors Tree and Park. I have Bob Russell here, and Dave Donahue from National Grid, and Roger. This is Anne-Marie Warren from National Grid. I'd just like to run through that packet that I gave you guys real quick, as quick as I can. First, I'd like to talk about things that have been going on since February. In February, National Grid came in and started Hazard Tree Mitigation Program. What that means is they took a circuit in town, drove the circuit, walked the circuit, and identified any trees for removal that were of any kind of potential hazard to the electric lines. So they took the Crocker Pond Circuit, and they took the feeder lines on the Crocker Pond Circuit, which is an eight-mile circuit that starts in Rantham, heads down West Street, comes on the South Street, goes across the Mechanic Street, takes in a little bit of Chestnut Street, takes in some of Napaunset Ave, does Walnut Street, North High, South High, and Fisher. And what they did is they sent one of their aborists out in February, early February. His name was Luke. And Luke walked the circuit, took him a month, identified what he thought was the hazardous trees, whether they were public or private. He kept in touch with me pretty much on a daily basis. If he needed to know whether they were public trees or private trees, I'd help him out with that. When all was said and done, I took a ride out, when he was done surveying that circuit with him, and looked at every tree that he had marked. I got to put my input in at that time, and also at that time, I was able to add to the list any of the trees that I had on my own list as takedowns for the town. When that was all said and done, on that eight-mile circuit, we had approximately 64 public trees to be removed. Also on that circuit, there was numerous private trees that were permitted to be removed. So that was one program that was started in February, and on April 2nd, that Hazard Tree Crew came into town and started doing those removals, and they are still in town now. And they're slated to be finished with this program next week, about the middle of the week. With that program, I was able to work close with the crews, and close with Mike Meierdix and Pat Smith, who kind of head up this thing underneath Anne-Marie. And, you know, we worked well together, and if I had another issue in the meantime, I was able to put it on their list, and they would help me take care of it. At the same time that was going on, Dave Donahue had one of his men come in and do an audit on the circuit. If you take out your big map here, I can show you what that circuit is. The circuit is 3432 W1 and 3432 W2, which basically covers the east side of town. It's the yellow and the pink circuit on that big map. What he did, he came in in February, and he addressed just immediate hazards, hangers, broken limbs, dead limbs over the wires, few trees here and there. And we went through basically the same process. He kept in touch with me. I rode the circuits when he was done. We looked at everything he had on these lists, and I was able to give him my input. And he also took some of my information and helped me out with trees on that side of town that I needed to have done. That was done prior to April 2nd. It was completed in March, that first process that was done. So that's been done and completed. And you have two separate sheets here that look like this. One was for the W1 side of that circuit, one was for the W2 side of the circuit. All that work has been completed. Right now, as we speak, we are also having a full trim of the 3432 W1, which I believe that W1 circuit is completely done. And we're in the 3432 W2 circuit right now, and they're pretty much getting a handle on that. And those guys in the crews, and Dave, keep me updated on everything that's going on, either, you know, a weekly basis. Most of the time, it's every day or every other day. I'm getting calls, so I know where they are, I know what's happening. So they're doing a great job on those circuits. They're opening them up bigger than they've been opened up for a lot of years. So even though, I know here we've got a spec sheet for them, and the 10 by 10 square, they're going a little heavier.
Okay.
So. And what's going to happen after this is they're going to go after that Crocker Pond Circuit, the 3424 W5, which is this green circuit, which covers basically south Foxborough. So that's the next phase of the programs that they're going to be doing, and that's a total trim. Even though they did the hazardous tree program down through the middle of that on the feeder lines, they're going to do a full trim on that circuit, which covers Mill Street, Prospect Street, South Street, Walnut Street, and that area there. So if you look at this map, by the time they leave town in 2012, you've got approximately 50% of the town either trimmed or a lot of trees removed on it for hazardous tree. And if you look down here, in 2013, they're going to do the 3422 W4 circuit, which is an orange, and they're going to do the 3424 W1. And then in 2014, they're going to move up to that blue circuit, which is 3431 W1. And 2015, they finish up the south Rantham circuit. And so by 2015, this whole town will have been trimmed out. As we go ahead here, I've been working with Dave for a lot of years, and we've got a really good working relationship, Dave and I. If he needs something when he comes into town, I'm willing to break off my guys. If he has a tree he has to take down, can't clean up the wood, or something like that, then I go out and I help him with that. On the same hand, if I have a problem with a tree that I can't handle, I can go see him, or I can call him, and we work together and get this stuff done. The same thing with the hazardous tree program. We're like, right now, when they're in town, you know, we're working close, you know, and the same thing when Dave's in town. So it's a win-win situation here. You know, it's a win situation with the town of Foxborough right now, because we're getting a lot of the town trimmed, and we're getting a lot of the hazardous trees that I can't handle, because it's way too big. And, you know, and they're getting help from the town of Foxborough at the same time.
We might say, too, that there's some other things we do. We let them stage out of the Highway Department area. They keep their trucks there. They're fairly secure. I wouldn't say they're 100% secure, because we've had a couple of break-ins down there, but they're fairly secure. And they clean up everything. We don't have to go out and clean up anything.
In the time that they've been here, from April 2nd, there is any, I've been tracking the crews that are coming into town. There's anywhere from three to eight tree crews in this town on a daily basis right now. So we're getting a lot of coverage, we're getting a lot of work done quick, and, you know, and it's a good thing. And, yeah, that's...
I might say, another thing is that on some of the large trees that they had to take down on the big circuit, many of those were more than hazardous to the wires. They were hazards to motorists. We got some that I spotted the day I came to work in Foxborough, and they're gone.
And that's the beauty of the Hazard Tree Program. They don't just take the trees down that are under the wires or right on that side of the street. If there's a tree across the street that's got rot on it, or, you know, that's got a cavity in it that potentially can fall across the street, they'll do that, too. You know, so it's not just right there. It's the whole street, both sides of the road, anything that needs to be handled at the time.
Lastly, I might say that during all this process, I think David ended up getting three calls, and I got one.
Three calls from all the work that's been going on, easily taken care of with a little education. Not a problem with anybody.
No lasting problems. I mean, they just are gone.
So when they come into town, it's neat, it's clean, you know, that's what I want. And, you know, and their crews keep me abreast of what's going on, so, you know, I can make sure that the town isn't just, you know, brush and crap everywhere when they're done. So it's working good.
You guys want to add anything?
Well, I appreciate being here tonight. My name's Dave Donahue. I work for National Grid. I am the local aborist for the company. I have to say that I appreciate Dave's kind words about our contractors and how they're performing. That means a lot, because we do work with them closely every day, communicating progress, any issues regarding customers that we need to be aware of, or special concerns. But I really have to say that even prior, and I don't want to go too far back into, you know, what's happened in the past years, but Dave and the town of Foxborough have been very helpful to our program of line clearance. He's very knowledgeable as a tree warden. He understands our issues and concerns, so I'm not sure what people have thought in the past about what we have done, but David's right on with, and I appreciate the words he mentioned to the cooperation. Because in order to get our work done and to get it done successfully, sometimes we rely on towns and their resources, particularly from the Department of Public Works or the Highway Department, and especially the tree wardens. So I know I've had his support in what we've been trying to do, and that's provide good, reliable electric service. And how I can affect that is through a good treatment program. So he knows our circuits better than probably any tree warden around here in the area. And I work in 32 different towns. And Dave is probably, he knows quite a bit about how we do things in our circuits, and he's rattling off these feeders like, you know, he knows them pretty well. Well, I had a chance to, Bob, share with me some of your concerns before, you know, our meeting tonight. And specifically, you know, I have worked with Anne, Anne is, I report to Anne-Marie. We work together. And at National Grid, Bob is with me in Hope Dale. We are local. We, Dave had mentioned, we're trimming free circuits right now in town. One is completely done with a few loose ends. We're wrapping up a few streets or some minor sections of trimming that we have to do. Second feeder is a small feeder, and we're just about done with that. We're probably going to finish that this week. The third feeder is the largest one of the three, which runs down South Street and Walnut and Mill, as Dave mentioned. And that feeds out of the Crocker Pond Substation on Route 1 in Athan. Foxborough's fed, and that's a total of 55 overhead miles. That's primary wire, and that's all in Foxborough, those three feeders. Foxborough's fed by, I think, eight different overhead feeders, distribution feeders, and different substations. So our cycle of trimming is a five-year cycle at National Grid. And unfortunately, all of those feeders and substations that affect Foxborough, they're not on the same cycle. So they do vary, and that's what Dave just mentioned. It's unfortunate, these storms, they just... But we were very close to actually being here if things had been different, but they weren't. One thing that I did mention in the previous, when we were providing information about what we might have done recently, is we did a lot of work before the hurricane in Foxborough. We actually previewed several of the circuits that we would be working on, and we were able to actually, we had some foresight in anticipating some areas where we had some trees that had died back, trees that we spotted that were, you know, not doing well, trees with cavities and holes in them. And a lot of these were over our main circuits. And we took care of them in the months of June and July. So, and that's not a big surprise, because we tend to have some heavy vegetation issues and some, we're seeing some things happen as we get close to actually being ready to trim. So it wasn't a big surprise that some of, you know, what we did anticipate, and we did some of that work.
I think, Dave, last year, in its June, July, he did like 19 miles of Foxborough in that program he did. And also, Hazard's Tree Program was in town, and they did the circuit from Elm Street Substation, up Elm Street, part of Chestnut, and down Cocos Street to about Cannon Forge. So that was done with that Hazard Tree Mitigation Program also last year. You know, so it's not like they haven't been in town, but, you know, things happen, you know.
I'm Bob Russell. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations for the new board and your positions. Looking for all the best success for you folks. What's interesting to me is this Hazard Tree Mitigation Program, it started about seven or eight years ago, if I recall, and it was selective. It was kind of a pilot project, and it's nice to see it's happening here, because what it is, it's talking about private trees that you couldn't get to before. These are within the fall zone of our lines. And I really want to say thank you to the public, the folks that are out there to work with us, to get, to help us trim those out, because it's really significant, because they're beautiful trees, and I know these folks are being very good about the way they can clear it. If it's a dying tree, that's an important thing. Some people don't want to hear that, but these folks, I'm sure, have proven it out to the homeowner. So it's really great to have the public out there knowing what we're doing and being a partner in this, because it's going to help the town, everyone in the town, keep reliable power here. I just want to say thank you, everybody. Okay, thanks.
In that same vein, I found that this time around, the public is really responsive to these programs, where this town sometimes has a hard time with the trees, but they're really, because the only trees that basically the Tree and Park Department takes down is something that's dead. You know, when it dies and it's gone, and it's really gone, that's when we get to it. But this program here addressed some really tough trees that, you know, we've been gritting our teeth on for years, you know, and it was nice to see that the public was engaging the program and letting us get on their property and letting these guys do the work, because it's far, it's long needed for a long time, you know, so. and letting us get on their property and letting these guys do the work because it's, it's far, it's long needed for a long time, you know, so...
Why don't we go around the board quick if you have any questions? Not quick, but if you have any questions, and then we'll see if there's anyone in the audience that wants to ask a question.
Well, this is really helpful. Everything broken down like this, I don't know if you did it or they did it, but...
This is the information I received from them, and I had Donna make up the packets because I keep, I get information, I have more information back at, at the garage with different circuits and stuff, but this is what's happening right now. So I just thought it would be easier for everybody to grasp, they could look right at it, you know.
Um, the, so these are all the feeder trees, and I'm getting to learn this stuff. It's just like learning water and sewer that I never thought I could get anything about, but I'm getting to learn that pretty well too. So I'm getting my education. First off, you know, it would've looked really well if you guys came in with a hundred thousand dollar check, like... But, but this is, this is a really good step, okay? So I just, a little bit of education for me. So these are all the feeders. And the big thing is this union loop, which I'm assuming, um, once we take care of the feeders, this could stop any potential problems happening to the union loop. Am I way off on that, or am I close?
I may have to defer that to you. But you know what, the union loop overlays, it's a subtransmission loop.
Right.
It's considered distribution. It overlays on this picture.
Yep.
You don't really see it, you'll see some pieces of it. About half of the union loop is in right-of-way, and half of, is on the main dr- on the main streets.
Yep.
Which are part of the cycle trimming, anyway. So half of it's being done here under this program. And the other half, I know that the transmission folks take care of that. And I know that Ann, Ann might have some better sense about what...
Because I've seen, you know, the trucks down on the Ponce de Av, they have replaced and all those poles, which, you know, if you look down, it was like, well, one's gonna go and they're off, it's gonna be a domino effect, so...
I know that we, we, after the storms, there's about seven thousand, this is not just Foxborough course, but seven thousand miles were reviewed, and absolutely, the union loop was too. And they clean up all the hangers, they clean up all of that, all the forestry type work, is my understanding. And they, they have been doing a lot more of that too. We flew over, I don't know if I saw the helicopters the other day, on the fifteenth. We flew over the union loop again. Just take a look, closer look at the crossarms and the construction and infrared some of the hotspots, make sure there's no hotspots out there. So we found a, a lot of work. So we've already got those packages put together and they're already out there, being worked. So the union loop, great question, because we know that that was a, that was a weak point. And that's, once that union loop is down, it doesn't matter what we have on the street, you know.
Exactly, exactly.
So that's absolutely right, and we are attacking that. And I don't know if Ann's got any more on it, but we're doing a lot of work out there, also.
Yeah, that too is on a five-year cycle. I'm Ann Moran from National Grid.
Ann Marie.
Yep, that too has a five-year cycle, and where it's right-of-way, we IBM, so, you know, we will work the herbicides in the right-of-way, you know, on any species that could actually grow up into the conductor. And then we also side-trim it. And that is on a five-year cycle as well. What we've done, and this is kind of like a company thing, what we've done in the past is what's on the street, our distribution arborists have taken care of, and what's on right-of-way, our transmission ones have. We've pretty much got everybody in agreement that going forward with our next fiscal year, just the distribution group will take those circuits over. And when we put it out to bid, the vendor who bids it will be responsible for the on-street and the off-street. So that it doesn't, like, miss a year, or, you know, one part gets done one year because of budgets or something, another gets done another year, or just the cycle. So we're gonna get them so that they're completely on-cycle, the whole circuit, as well. And they, they, they run, they'll run together, you know, it won't be like, you know, you might have two distribution circuits in one year and one of the sub-T circuits from the union loop, or vice versa. It'll just be on, they'll be on their own five-year cycle, each individual circuit.
Do you know where we stand right now in the, in the, in the cycle of things?
Um, I don't have the exact cycle listed in front of me. I do have this information, though, that approximately thirteen point one miles of it, and it's not just obviously in Foxborough. If you're familiar with the map, the union loop goes down into Attleboro and out into Rantham and Franklin. But thirteen point one miles were worked, um, let's see, it's all since early, it's like August timeframe. And then he has, the previous year, there were seventeen point five miles worked, as far as sideline and trimming. So that in and of itself on it was done. And again, they're on a five-year cycle. I can get the information as far as each line and give you, you know, what the cycle is on that, on that transmission pulse.
It just seems that that's, that's, was a huge problem was, you know, that's, well, that's what we were told, that it was the union loop that, that, you know.
It was, yeah.
Yeah. And the access, yeah, the access is worse. Um, you know, when, when a tree comes down across the lines on the street, you know, people see it, somebody reports it. When it's out in the union loop somewhere off right-of-way, between, if it's snow, it's getting in there, or it's just kind of finding it if it's at night. So that's where a lot of the issues come from. And I know we've had issues on the loop in different, some of the different towns for access. You know, we have to block it because you get off-road vehicles in there. So, you know, we have to get that, somebody to move that, and then get in there to get the vehicles in there. So, you know, some of that's the time-consuming part of that.
Right.
But, um, you know, the tree trimming has been on a five-year cycle on the loop as well, so, and we're gonna continue that. And instead of having the two different departments, we're gonna merge that into that.
Makes sense.
One department will be responsible for the entire circuit.
Makes sense.
Just to add to that also, with a distribution standpoint, pardon me. With a distribution, uh, planning standpoint, where, is a, is a proposal, a couple of proposals out there to, to beef up and strengthen that union loop, probably about, it's tens of millions of dollars. A proposal is being looked at right now by management. We know how important it is to all the communities for the union loop. And we're also shifting load off of it and strengthening more feeders, so we have a good plan. I mean, this, this was a, a wake-up call for that union loop. We, there's a lot of damage out there, and we repaired a lot of it, and we continue to do that. So it's very important to reliability, absolutely.
Thanks.
Jenny?
Thank you for the packet of information, it's a very good, I'm the new one on the board, so I don't know the particulars. I wasn't under fire, but I can just tell you, Foxborough loves its trees, but we like our electricity even more.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Bob, just a question about the union loop piece. You mentioned when you did the survey, the aerial survey, that you found different hotspots. So that is related to the actual structures themselves?
Yes.
This is not, nothing to do with tree or anything like that? And so where does that stand in terms of...
Right now, that stands, they did the survey, they did the flyover last on the fifteenth, I think, maybe it was a couple of days. And they came out with about, where I saw it, was about thirty or so crossarms that need to be replaced. They weren't destroyed, but they look like they were, the integrity was, could be strengthened. And the connections at the top of the poles, we infrareded a lot of those. And wherever we found something above temperature, higher than normal, we don't wanna let that go, so we're gonna replace those connections.
So what type of timeframe is that?
Oh, good question. If the timeframe is, they're working on it right now, they're gonna be completed in a month, is what I'm understanding.
Okay, great.
Yep, great question.
Great, thank you.
They're, they're going very quickly with this, making sure it gets done.
It, it's aggressive, it's vivid, everybody notices, and we appreciate it. And it's, it's very well appreciated by not just the board, but everybody in town. And it is very professionally done, Dan, and you can see it. And it's not just this town, I see it in a lot of towns right now. Uh, am I exaggerating? Do I see you in Rantham, I see you in Norfolk. Everywhere I go, there's a detail and there's a tree trimming going on right now.
Yeah, they're probably doing a little bit of work up in Norfolk with EnStar. They are, I have seen some cutting up there, we're traveling through there, but we're in, uh, we're in several of the nearby towns, we're not...
We take credit for Norfolk, though, you know.
Yeah, if you liked it, it was us.
We're there too.
But Norfolk is served by EnStar, but we are out there. We're, you know, there's a lot of nearby feeders and towns that we're, we're working in, so. We'll be in Plainville after Foxborough. But, you know, a lot of this work is bid, so it's, uh, they're under a schedule, the contractor to get it done in a period of time, but they, you need to get through their work, I audit the work after it's completed. So all these feeders that, you know, I was talking to Dave about the progress of how we're doing before we came in as well. And I will look at the work when it's, when the contractor tells me they're ready to have it audited. We'll ride together and go over it. So we're, we're gonna probably start that up either the end of this week. Starting to look at the quality and how well they did, and if there's any go-bangs, I would like them to, you know, attend to. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Now, to start off by saying, Dave, I have a lot of respect for the work that you do. And it's great to see the, the reach over, the coordination between your departments and, and the, and National Grid. And just so the people at home know, this, this isn't just a pretty presentation that you guys did for the cameras. I, I kinda gave you a surprise visit three months ago.
Right.
To see how you were doing on it. And you had a lot of this stuff all over the desk, and you were showing me the, the different loops and the different things over the five years. So this, this, I know you guys have been working hard. And Bob, I was giving your email out and your cellphone out like it was candy when people would call up because this town was incredibly frustrated. And I see Lauren Batar's head, you know, I saw some of the emails, that's her, by the way, that was... The two-thirty in the morning Sunday call, and, uh, and you, you, nothing but professional. You were getting back to her and she was forwarding the email, so I appreciate that. It sounds like you guys have your hands around the specifications on what and where and how you cut. But if and when this happens again, the biggest issue, a lot, people understood that we were gonna be without electricity, and they could deal with that, but they couldn't deal with the fact of not knowing. And no one returning calls and a ridiculous website that wasn't giving information and, you know, the whole, that was what frustrated. So if and when this ever happens again, are we still gonna have the same protocol, protocol with the National Grid liaison? And, and has the technology helped at all?
It has, and if you don't mind, but you're right, the liaison, day one is what, based on the type of storm and the, if it's a level four, five, three, four, five, day one, we're gonna be here with the liaison. We also now, it's a field liaison to work with Chief Hatfield or any of the, the incident commander in town. And just so we can get an assessment, well, assessment right away of what the damage is in town from the folks who know. Another program we're starting out is an eight-hour fast-track assessment. And this might help with that, how long is a storm gonna be? Is it gonna be multi-day, which is kind of what we said in the very first one? And it was not a comfortable thing to say because multi-day could be anything, but we, I think our intent was really three, four, five. But the eight, the eight-hour assessment is going to give us with, and they're gonna be running it through some kind of an algorithm program and take a lot of information in from the assessors. They're going to be able to extrapolate and find out exactly, best guess of a day, two days, three and a half days, three. So they're working on that fast-track assessment program right now. As far as an operations liaison to work with me, so I can communicate out to the field, your liaisons, to communicate to Roger, or Chief Hatfield. So we have a connection now inside. We did before, but it's a real formalized connection. We have, um, we have, we've trained a hun- we've got a lot of people who are responsible and accountable now. Names are put on the, on certain spots, and we have re, we did an end-to-end process review of the entire emergency response program. We did it not just on ourselves, we did it with other utilities in the area. And it was partnered with Mast DPU, so they kind of ran this. So we all are looking at best practices. So assessment to get an early date, an early, what's the, what's the ETA for the entire storm? Then from a Foxborough standpoint, within twenty-four hours, we should have a better sense of what's it mean about to Foxborough? As far as, because then we'll have a number of crew counts, we'll have the assessment, and we'll be able to do the math and, um, and get a better sense. So there's other ideas as well, um, that I don't have to get into right now, I just, I know time is running. But we have a lot of things going on, which I think you'll be very happy with.
Yeah, and, and I think there were some, as much as it was a, a bad time on two storms for Foxborough, some good stuff is coming out of it. I know, I've been talking to people at the state housing, senior housing, and they're still talking about getting generators, and it's a little closer than we were before. So that's positive. And, and I think Chief Hatfield, we're gonna be asking you to come back with your group on the stuff that you learned from the emergency preparedness, you know, the cots and the blankets and all that stuff. So I think we all learned a little bit, and I'm glad you guys came back. Is there anyone in the audience that had any questions? Mr. Segal?
Chairman, Howard Segal, Free Catherine Road. Uh, first of all, I got a couple of questions and probably a couple of comments. Can you tell me when the feeder lines in the town itself, the entire town and all of the feeder lines in Foxborough will be done? I'm hearing, I heard two thousand and fifteen, I heard different percentages thrown out. So I'm just trying to understand, when are we completely done so that we're where we should be?
Never. Because we continue to cycle it around.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, when are we gonna be caught up for all the work that wasn't done for many years so that we had these enormous problems? Foxborough itself had much more problems than almost any other place in the state. So my question is, when is Foxborough gonna be completely trimmed and the feeder lines into Foxborough trimmed? Are they gonna, is it gonna be this year?
Well, the schedule, it's a rolling schedule, so two thousand and fifteen is when we're going to have this. And it rolls into two thousand sixteen, yes, but two thousand fifteen, right today, right now in time, is two thousand fifteen.
Okay. So now we're making comments, Chairman, that's okay. This is to the Board of Selectmen, to the Town Manager. I think everybody in Foxborough has a pretty good opinion of our Parks Department, thinks they do a great job. Second of all, I think, Jim, you've done a great job moving this forward. But I am gonna say that I think the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager needs to stay on this and insist that National Grid catch up this year. You know, we're gonna have more storms, it's New England. Hurricane season starts June first. So I'm hearing like fifteen or twenty percent of the town is going to be done. That's totally unacceptable. National Grid should be deploying whatever resources are necessary so that our town is completely done. It hasn't been done, it hasn't been done in years. When they're talking about this five-year cycle, Foxborough's itself was not done in a long time. The trees in Foxborough have not been done, which is why we lost power, people lost it for between twelve and fourteen days. So when they're talking about this thing being fixed by two thousand and fifteen, and we're all saying that's great, we're missing the point. They, they didn't do their job. If they were not a monopoly, they would've been fired. When you don't do your job and then you come in and you say, hey, I didn't do my job for a long time, but I did ten percent of my job, and people start slapping you on the back, you know you're dealing with a monopoly. It's important that we get Foxborough done before October, where we have another snowstorm like that, or November. You know, we're, it's not like Foxborough doesn't have tropical storms. We may not have hurricanes every year, we get windstorms every year, we get northeasterners every year. So the fact that this, that they're talking about two thousand and fifteen just to get Foxborough done, I really don't think that's acceptable, and I would really strongly urge the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager to stay on top of this, stay with the DPU. I can guarantee you, I'll stay with the DPU, I can guarantee you that, because I don't think they did their job. They're still talking about private property. Each easement that National Grid has inherited from Massachusetts Electric and all the other utility companies that have been here before, gives them the right to pass and repass to maintain their grid. So if they go to someone's house that has a wire that's important to other people, not just to themselves, but to other people, and they don't want a tree trimmed, it's too bad. They have the right under their easement to go on there and trim those trees. So they shouldn't be wasting a lot of time with that. That's something they have a right and an obligation to do. But I would strongly urge you to stay on top of this because, you know, if we have a bad storm in two months from now and you're not in the fifteen percent that's done, I, I can guarantee you that the people in town who are in the other eighty-five percent are gonna be pretty unhappy, just like they were last year.
Thank you. And, and I will use the opportunity, and I did say to Marcy that I wasn't gonna go back to the storm, and I'm not gonna do that. But moving forward, and, and Mr. Segal, Linda and I went to the DPU hearings, we testified. Mr. Segal was there, so he has been following this, and I think that the questions have merit. If you can just kind of, while we have you at the table, so we're not asking you back six months or after another storm, how do you address the question of, this is a, from two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen, it's three more years before you get to the South Rantham Substation feeder, where if a storm comes in June, you know...
Well, if it's a five-year cycle, I'm, I'm gonna probably defer this to Ann because...
Yeah, please.
Because if that's due in two thousand fifteen, it was done two and a half to three years ago. That's the five-year gap. So we're not trimming everyone every single year. We used to trim by town, when I had this area, we trimmed by town. And I came in and worked with the tree committee, and we had to split it by quadrant, it was before we did it by circuit. But that wasn't the best reliability because if I was trimming up here, and the beginning of that circuit was here and a tree knocked it out, everybody up here, it doesn't matter what I trimmed, because the tree fell out here in this quadrant of town. So we trim by circuit, and that makes it better for reliability, starting at the substation and working our way out. And it's not all done every year, so the best way I can describe it, if you have six or eight circuits in town, we're, we do, we do it by circuit out of the substation, so you're doing Circuit A and B, and then you're going to Circuit C and D and E and F in that rotation. C and D, and E and F in that rotation. Then you go right back to Circuit A and B in that five-year cycle. Our clearances, the 10 feet above, 10, six to eight feet on the side, and then 10 feet below where we can get it, where we're not asked to keep a ledge under there, or a buffer, are specifically for a five-year cycle. It's designed, it's, you know, it's been tested, it's used across the industry. People, depending on the cycle, there are different amounts that you do. Now, it doesn't mean that a rogue tree isn't going to grow in there, but most of your outage is not caused from trees growing through the wires. It's really, you're just touching the wires. It's, 90% of them are from things that are breaking, trees that are coming from the vines.
Okay. So, and I understand that, but if we're, I think the question is, if we're waiting for 2015 to get South Rantham station done, that's for maintenance. But are all these stations ready if the storm hit, aside from the maintenance? But has someone gone through all these and make sure that they're up to speed now, during, understanding there's going to be a cycle for trimming later? I think that's what Mr. Segal's asking, if something hit tomorrow, are we going to say, well, that wasn't scheduled for 2015, we're three, three years early?
I mean, we're constantly looking at our feeders, even ones that were trimmed two or three years ago. So we are reviewing them, we review them on an interim trim basis. So from two or three years after it was trimmed, we're looking at it again, we're looking at the main lines. We would not expect to have a lot of outages on a feeder that had been trimmed two years ago. So if a feeder is due for trimming, you know, if we just trimmed the feeder, we wouldn't expect, we would expect it to go all of five years, and then it's scheduled, it'll be trimmed that fifth year. So there will be, you know, we're hoping our program does what it's supposed to do.
Just to back, I think I may have mentioned it earlier, I'm not sure if it was heard by everybody, but we've, we went through every circuit post-storm, 7,000 miles of circuit. Every circuit has been checked for trees, and for hazard trees, for hangers, that type of thing.
Okay.
Everything has been checked. 7,000 miles, it was all completed. That was done within two months after the storm. Okay? So that might help answer the question.
Okay.
Because that's a great question to ask. It's beyond maintenance, it's what's out there hanging and ready to go. We checked everything.
Okay.
Let me start.
We just don't have another meeting at the high school, guys.
No, we won't.
We had 10 of them. 10 emergency meetings. All right, guys, thank you very much, I appreciate your time. And I know you came far to come here, so.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Good job.
All right. Thanks for your patience. State Rep. Jay Barrows, we're a little bit behind, but you want to come up to the table, please?
Evening.
With me is David Young from CDM, who's a consultant on our regional sewer plan. And just want to say congratulations. I think this is my first meeting since the two of you have been re-elected, elected, so congratulations. Also, would like to say thank you to Leo Potter, who spent the last five and a half years with the sewer, Regional Sewer Study Group, who's recently retired, and now Roger Hill has stepped in in his place. And Roger comes with a tremendous amount of knowledge and experience, and we welcome him, but do certainly want to, to thank. So tonight, just wanted to bring you up to, up to speed with where we're at, with the regional agreement. In May of 2010, the governor signed legislation creating the agreement, creating the sewer district. And we have been working since, nobody's signed the dotted line yet. We don't anticipate that happening for another couple of months, but everybody's been working diligently, creating an operating agreement, a sense of when we hand this off to the regional district, that we'll have representatives from each of the three towns, that there's some history, there's some sense of what the committee had intended. Because quite frankly, I don't think any of us now, in that capacity, will serve on that regional district. And one of the things that we had discussed was the ability for the three communities to set their own standards and own connection fees, if you will. Both Foxborough and Norton require a lot of additional infrastructure that doesn't exist now. Mansfield's got more of a mature system, and will be doing more increased flow for certain areas of town, without necessarily new connection fees. But Foxborough and Mans, Foxborough and Norton, rather, will have, have to recover some of the costs for not only what exists, but future. So that's kind of where, where we're at. This amendment, and I apologize, I should have passed this when I walked up to the table, but I'll send them around now. We've just prepared a draft that will go to the House of Representatives for passage, and then on to the Senate, and then on to the, to the governor. So Dave, I don't know if you want to add a couple of key points?
Sure. What's being passed around is legislation that would be, as Jay said, tacked on to the Home Rule legislation that was passed earlier to create, or allow the three communities, Mansfield, Foxborough, Norton, to create a wastewater district. It's felt that this is the easiest way to do this legislation. And what this would do, would give Foxborough, as well as the other two communities, the option, not committing anything tonight, but it would give you the option to use what's known as connection fees, to help you recover costs for the wastewater treatment plant expansion going forward. There's a lot of case law that's out there. I'm not a lawyer, I'm an engineer. But reviewing that case law, and talking to people who have been through this, there have been challenges to it sometimes. So the recommendation typically has been to actually get special legislation that would allow you to specifically use connection fees for this purpose. Typically, the challenge has been that it's a tax. But there's a lot of case law out there that backs up the use of connection fees, and defines it as not being a tax, either meets the three criteria of not being a tax. You will also still, always still have the, as it says in the legislation, the ability to use other assessments, betterments, or privilege fees, however you may choose to do your cost recovery. I know Roger Hill now is in the Water and Sewer Board, working to develop a finance recovery program, working with a finance consultant they've hired. This actually doesn't have anything specifically to do with the wastewater district. It's back with each community, but it was felt that since it's so important to the district moving forward, that this would be the best thing to do, where we already have the special legislation in place to create the district.
Again, this has been a project that I guess I started, Dave and I, Dave I think was the second person I met when I got elected, and began serving in 2007, to talk about the needs of the three communities, and the fact that this whole thing has been kicking around, I think, since, what, 1999? Or, you know, quite, quite a long time ago. And it does take a long time, it's a huge expense, it's a huge component. And like you just had, your meeting with National Grid, people rely on electricity, they also rely on sewer in areas of town that are not, can be successfully septic, you know. So our industry, our opportunity to grow our commercial base, which I think everybody talks about, be interesting to see what is the outcome of the master plan study. And I know, Mark, you talked about it years ago, what's it going to do downtown if we were able to add capacity? You know, what's the value of downtown? What's it going to look like? So when we get that back from the planning board, I think that'll give us some clear direction as to what we can do. I know the town of Mansfield is anxious to get started. They recently completed a five-year plan with Dr. Mullen from the University of Massachusetts on our commercial conversion, if you will, from warehouse to people and things, and R and D, and that sort of stuff. And we've seen some growth in the industrial park, which benefits all of us, as a, as a region. You know, we've got perhaps some of the lowest unemployment rates in the state, in all of New England. We've, we seem to have survived our housing, and schools are doing really well. We've made some public investments, as well as some private, so things are happening. So this is an important piece as we move forward, the next 20, 25 years. Dave has been working very hard. Roger's got the information on, to phase this in. Initially, I think we were trying to bite off more than we could chew, but we've rolled it back now to lower the, the necessary amounts that both Norton and Foxborough have to pursue. And with the ability to add to that at a future date, we've completed the acquisition of some land for recharge in Norton, and we're working on another piece, so we'll have that done as well. So, but that's our, that's our story. We're looking tonight, if possible, for the board's support. I know this is a little out of your bailiwick, where we have a sewer commission, Water and Sewer Commission. However, I think it's important, as I file the legislation, that I can hand three letters to the clerk, and say, I have the support of the leadership of the community, as well as the Water and Sewer Commissioners from both Norton and Foxborough. The town of Mansfield, two weeks ago, I guess we were there, two weeks ago, tomorrow night, and they supported 5:0. And Dave and I will be at Norton this week at 7:30, asking the same. So leave it to you, Mr. Chairman, if you could ask a member to perhaps make a motion, or everybody nod their heads at once, and send us a letter if they so choose, or any questions, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Let me say, as far as, as long as I've known you, you seem to always get to the dance in Foxborough, when the sewer thing just kind of hells off. But incredible amount of work, and it's frustrating that we just can't get there in this, to put a piece of legislation with your name on it. I know there's a ton of work, and I appreciate that, and you've done great work on this. We haven't met with the Water and Sewer, and I know there's a couple of members, I think you guys may have posted your meeting. But Bill, would you want to say a couple of words, just?
I would like to.
Would you, please?
First of all, this thing is, is important, because we have always assumed we could assess connection fees. And much to our surprise, we have found that, based on what we've heard at this, the IMA meetings, that there have been challenges in other communities to connection fees, where the challenge is one. We do not want that to happen if we put together a plan where there are connection fees. And as Jay said, this doesn't do, I think Dave said, this doesn't create a connection fee, or anything like that. This gives us the ability, that if we create a connection fee, and set up a financing plan on the basis of that, then it's, it's not challengeable. So I think it's important that this go through, and we support that.
You do, okay.
Okay, yeah, that's what we wanted to know.
And then the other component, and Jay had mentioned it, a bunch of, you know, Ginny had gone, and there's some people in the audience had gone to that pre-finalization of the Planning Board's master plan, and they're doing some tremendous work. And I think the question was, if you had your druthers, where do you see Foxborough in the future? You know, A, do nothing and leave it the way it is, or B, C, D, and E. And every single option depended on sewer.
Right.
So it's, you know, the rates aside, this getting sewer in our arms around it is critical to what the Planning Board's doing, which is in fact what the town is giving them input on.
And if I may comment on that piece of it as well, although that isn't really this, but that's, that is a really important thing that's going on. I can't emphasize that too much. When we've brought plans for sewerings to the town before, they've really been sewering residential areas, extending the lines out and so forth. What the Planning Board is looking at is what we need for the center of town and areas like that for development. Okay? What we are likely to be bringing in the near future is along the lines of what the Planning Board is identifying. When they identify a need, we collectively here, all of us, need to figure out how we're going to finance that. Okay? Because we, as Water and Sewer Commissioners, don't believe we can place the burden of buying into an expansion in the Mansfield plant. We can't place that on the sewer users who are currently there, who in fact don't need an expansion of that plant. We, as a town, need some of that expansion. And that came up repeatedly in the previous programs that we tried to pitch, when we were going out into the residential areas, but we didn't have information on that. The Planning Board, I think, is doing now is vitally important to us, for a picture of what we need for sewer for the town. And I think the town needs to find a way to come up with the money for that. So, without trying to fire any guns here.
Yep. Well said. Yep. All right. So you want to go around this way, Mark, do you have any comments?
Jay, appreciate what you do. This is not the House bill number, is it?
Oh, no. We usually come a little bit better prepared than that. We haven't, we haven't filed it yet, so Mary just drafted it today in our law system. And once we have approval from the three towns, we'll file, and it'll get a bill number once the clerk gets it.
And you ask for motion.
It would be more in line of supporting the draft.
Yeah, supporting the draft, the title of it. Yeah, an Act to amend would be fine. And then, once we file it, we certainly let you guys know where it's at, and what's happening.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Lorraine?
I had a question for Bill. So at some point in time, when a program is developed, that would be brought forward to town meeting for approval? And is that where the information about what types of assessments are?
I think we'll be talking about it long before it gets to town meeting, because obviously we need to have a plan in place. And it's, I don't believe that we can project, as a Water and Sewer Commission, a financing plan that's adequate, of what we need to do in terms of purchasing flow capacity in these standards plan. So I, I think of necessity, we're going to be in here talking to you folks. I mean, I'm not trying to project which way any of that goes, but certainly I think we'll be stopping in here, before it gets to town meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Will you be letting us know when the hearings take place, so we can go in?
Well, we're hoping that we've got enough juice after being in there for three terms that I don't have to go through the hearing process.
Take us out for lunch.
That we can do. No, but I'd be more than happy to have you come in, and again, hope that the, our committee can come in as well, if there are any questions. This was a little tricky, getting the, the first piece signed. Actually, the Senate had to do a redraft, because the House bill, not that it was messed up, but it didn't, it didn't flow right. So the Senate got a hold of it, and they had the cerebral part of the executive, of government, so they fixed it, and Senator Timmeltie got it through and got it signed.
Was this the original bill, or is this original language, or is this based on?
No, this is an amendment. The original was Acts of 2010, Chapter 101. So that was done.
For Foxborough?
Yeah, for Foxborough, for the three towns. And then this is just simply an amendment that your attorney, Paul Durensis, did, working with both Mansfield and Foxborough. And then the folks in Norton have a different council, they, he signed off on it, and was comfortable with it.
But has the House Council?
I haven't had the House Council look at it yet. So that's, again, why I'm asking today for your support. I think House Council will be fine with it, quite frankly, should be okay. Dean Durensis is pretty sharp. And usually, when he signs his name to something, they, they, they work with him.
Yeah, but it also helps to get input from all the towns and all the boards, you know, to go up, really to go up to the hearings, because numbers speak very loudly.
Right, right, exactly.
So if we can all go up, I mean, it really is.
Yeah, well, you know, when it's, again, I'm hoping, because it's a really late filing, I don't know whether I can pull it off before the end of July. We're going to try.
Hey, Linda?
At one point, I thought Easton was...
Oh, yeah, Easton's still with us.
Okay. That's good to know.
Yeah, they're, they're looking, and they attended, they've had a representative from Weston and Sampson, right? Is that who's been there for?
No.
I'm sorry, we have multiple consultants, don't we? And Roger's background in Easton, along with Kevin's, but yeah, Easton has been at the table. They would be treated as a customer through Mansfield. So we've been carrying 100, 125,000 gallons a day to sewer that Five Corners, 106, 123, and bring it up through, either goes through Mansfield or Norton. But, yeah, they're interested in, again, it's, when everybody gets the bill, then everybody's going to swallow hard a few times and say, okay, we can do this. And to your point, you know, how are we going to finance it? You know, and again, people that have it now don't need it expanded, but when we look at the future, and also the thing that I'm hopeful of, we recently went through a consolidation of all the various and sundry state tax incentives for various infrastructure projects under Secretary Bilekki. So now we have kind of one-stop shopping, which, you know, we're hoping is going to be more effective. But we have SRS, SRF monies that we potentially could qualify at 0%. But we need to get this done, and the window is, you know, closing, right? I mean, we keep saying that, and here we are, year five. But seriously, the Cape is poised to introduce a regional system, and they're meeting some of the criteria of this legislation that was passed three years ago. So we really need to get done soon. We're hoping for the Planning Board report, and get some sense of, you know, where Foxborough's at. So... at, so.
Okay, and before we entertain a motion, is there anyone from the audience that wanted to comment on this? Not seeing anybody. Does somebody wanna make a motion?
A move that we, not approve, but we support, support the House bill for an act to amend the Regional Wastewater District Enabling Act for the towns of Mansfield, Foxborough, and Norton.
Motion made, seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Five, nothing, Pauline?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll be back.
Make sure the free lunch bar.
Do you want a letter or something from us?
Yeah, if we could get a letter drafted, already written. Kevin, thank you. Who do you want as the addressee? You can just address it to me. It's fine, yeah. At the State House and we'll put it with the other two, hopefully, and.
Do you have a letter from the water and sewer?
We've got a vote from our, our committee, so, but I'll take whatever I can get, you know, just to put it with it to show that we have support, okay? Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thanks, David, appreciate it. Okay, the next agenda item, a discussion on housing production plan. What this is, we were requested by the planning department through Sharon, the planning board, I'm sorry. We had the choice of either going to their meeting to hear something or them coming to our meeting to hear something. And what, there's a lot of acronyms here, but what they've been working on is, you've all heard the term 40B, when somebody wants to come in to do a housing development. And the town as a whole doesn't have 10% affordable allocated to that housing, 10% of the part of the housing stock. If a developer wants to come in there, they can take any zone and say, "We wanna put any amount of units in there." And the town really doesn't have a voice on it because it's state regulation that they passed, the Chapter 40B. What the planning board is working on is a program where we look at the town as a whole and we come up a plan on our own of where housing should be, what the numbers are, so we can kind of put our arms around it. So if and when a developer comes to Foxborough and tries to do a 40B, we, by going through this program, it gives the zoning board some teeth to say, "It doesn't fit in our master plan." So I'm gonna read something real quick. This is what I just, I pulled this from work. It kind of explains what it is. "A housing production plan is a community's proactive strategy for planning and developing affordable housing by creating a strategy to enable it to meet its affordable housing needs in a manner consistent with the 40B. The HPP regulations became effective in 2008 when the DHCD, was Department of Housing and Development, promulgated a comprehensive permit for low and moderate housing. The HP regulation is contained in state law. If a community has a DHCD plan approved by HPP and is granted certification of compliance with the plan, a decision by the zoning board of appeals relative to a comprehensive 40B basically has some teeth." So, the question is, do we want the planning board to come in front of us after they've had these discussions and presentation by the state group? I thought it would be better if we went to their meeting and that way we can listen and ask questions and it gives Pauline the night off and gives us a little more synergy. So the meeting is scheduled.
It's scheduled June 28?
June 28th, at seven, at the, I think it's at the Public Safety Building. So do you guys wanna do that instead?
Yeah, I like that idea.
All right, so I'll send an email back to Kevin Weinfeld, who invited us.
And we'll post the meeting. That's the only thing on the agenda would be a joint meeting with them, correct?
Correct, yep.
So we'll have Kevin post the meeting.
Where's that gonna be?
At the Public Safety Building.
The Public Safety Building, at 7:00 PM.
Will there be a packet here, Jim, for that? Just schedule it.
I'll ask Sharon if they can get us something in preparation for it. I don't think, they probably want, there's not gonna be a selectmen's packet with everything else in it.
No, just, you know, some information on.
Yep.
I mean, I know you understand this fully and I know I got a good grasp on it, but some of the other board members might not have the background you have.
All right, I'll reach out to Kevin and see if he can give us an informational packet. All right, at 8:10, we had Labor Council advisory opinion regarding collective bargaining. And Kevin?
Mr. Chairman, the, some time ago, actually, a town meeting, and Dick, I've got a complimentary copy for you with your name on it, because Dick had raised the question at town meeting concerning collective bargaining and how the process works and that sort of thing. So, thanks, Dick. So we had committed to having Labor Council take a look at how the Town Manager Act compares to the general bylaw and basically what this is, and I'll just read one paragraph which sort of really has the heart of it. "The bylaw," now that's the general bylaw, "provides for the Board of Selectmen to appoint a five-man or management bargaining team, each member meeting certain criteria. Although a town manager would have the qualifications to fill more than one of the positions, the bylaw does not expressly require that the town manager be on the team. In sharp contrast, the Town Manager Act gives the town manager the leading role in collective bargaining, empowering him to negotiate all collective bargaining contracts on behalf of the town under the guidance of the Board of Selectmen. The town manager may seek the assistance of Labor Council as he deems necessary to effect successful negotiations, unquote. There are no requirements that the town manager include any specific positions or individuals on his bargaining team, leaving to him to the decision whether and to what extent to consult with Labor Council. For any or all of the above reasons, it is my opinion that the Town Manager Act of 2004 modifies, if not effectively repeals, the bylaw collective bargaining provision. This means that the town manager under the guidance of the Board of Selectmen has the authority to determine his management team, if any, for the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements." And that's signed by Leo Pellicwen, our Labor Counsel, and it's a lot more extensive than that. I just summarized the opinion. Two notes. One is that there are many, many instances where the bylaw has now been superseded by the Manager Act. A lot of the authority that previously, under the bylaw, accrued to either the town administrator and predominantly the personnel board, has now been shifted to the Board of Selectmen and the town manager. This is one specific area that Leo was asked to opine in, but he also sent an email with this that I know you all saw, you're all on the email chain, where he said, "At some point, the bylaw really needs to be rewritten because there are many, many places where the bylaw conflicts with the Manager Act and it continues to provide great confusion." In fact, that was just deposed in a termination case involving a past employee in Boston week before last, and the attorney was quoting from the bylaw and our attorney had to remind him, "That's no longer operative. That provision has been replaced by the Town Manager Act." And again, it just highlighted the fact that we've really got to take that bylaw and amend it because it's just providing a lot of confusion. The Personnel Bylaw Committee, for its part, has expressed great confidence and a desire to see that work done. And it's just, we just haven't gotten around to it because it's a, it's a large body of work. The bylaw is very, very large and it's gonna take a lot of work to make the two documents consistent. I don't wanna task Town Council, Labor Council, because it would be a big, big bill. So it's something I'm hoping the HR director can do once she gets here, and I'm hoping that will be later this summer. So that's one thing. Now, as a practical matter, what I wanted to tell the board is that.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Yep, sure.
Because it's just a lot easier to respond on.
Yep, absolutely. It kinda, this dovetails a little bit into what we had on the agenda before. When you say amend the bylaw, there is also an opportunity to amend the Town Managers, Strong Town Managers Act. So I think we had talked about it the last meeting, putting an effort. So we under, I mean, if the attorneys are in front of the judge and they're referencing two different things, good luck to volunteer selectmen trying to figure it out on our own. So we were looking at having a consultant come in and explain to us what your strong town, what our strong Town Manager Act is. So I don't want it to be a given that we're amending the bylaw. We wanna revisit the Town Managers Act. I have a couple more things. I don't, you guys have any?
That's exactly where I was going on that. I just, we're just starting to look at this. I mean, there's no hurry to amend it. We wanna look at the other aspects, exactly what you said. Look and see if the town wants to proceed with the Strong Town Manager Act in the future or go back to, and it's a long process. We're just opening this up, so it would be jumping the case on us to gun, so.
I guess the point is whichever way you wanna go.
Yep.
It needs to get resolved at some point. That's, that's the important point.
It's gonna be a long process though, no matter what, which way it goes. I don't see it happening anytime soon.
I was just talking with Kevin about this and I had gone to the MMA website to see if I could find any type of, you know, resource as a starting point, you know, whether a Speaker's Bureau. I didn't find anything there, so I think maybe we'll talk some more and try and figure out, you know, the next step in terms of how to get someone to come in and speak with us on the topic and, you know, do, I think, a good presentation that would help us see, like, highlight some of those things for us. Because I think that, again, when you look at the government study that was done that led up to this change in 2004, there was a lot of good rationale given for why this approach was taken. So, you know, I think it would be important for us to have all that background also.
I'm actually headed tomorrow afternoon to the Spring Town Managers meeting, so while I'm there, I'm gonna find out, do we still have the Speaker Bureau? Who's on it? Who's the chair? And if I can get that information, we do still have it, I'll relay that to Lorraine and then she can make the arrangements, you know, tap that asset. The other thing I wanted to tell the board is, is a practical matter, and I think Leo makes that point in his memo. The provisions in the old bylaw were to have a team, basically, that conducted the negotiations. And as a practical matter, that's exactly what I do. Now, I don't do that because of the bylaw. I do it because that's the way I've been doing it for a long time. So usually, the folks that I have on it, the chief financial officer, the department head for the contract we're doing, so that would be either the library director, the DPW director, the fire chief, or the police chief. And then I sometimes try to have a non-aligned person, you know, a department head who's got nothing to do with it. That's a little more difficult because they're also busy. And if we have a management intern, I have the management intern on, which is invaluable because he or she is learning and at the same time, they're doing a lot of research for us, comparative stuff, which is, you know, super. So we have a bargaining team, which very closely mirrors what the old bylaw had anyways. And I thought Dick would derive some reassurance from that. The other thing I do.
Okay, Kevin, just a quick question on that. Years before my time, but wasn't, maybe one of you guys know, wasn't there a selectman on that board a while ago?
There used to be on that team, yeah.
And then right now, there's no selectman?
Yeah, and you really, I think Labor Counsel would tell you, you probably can flick that out because here's, you are required to approve all contracts that I negotiate. And it says languages under the guidance of or something like that. So the way I've interpreted that has passed to me from Andy, has passed to me from Linda and from Larry in terms of how it was done in the past, is I come in and I have a negotiating parameter-setting session with you before I start bargaining and I say, "Okay, what are you thinking about for next year, for coal or if any? What are you thinking about of areas that we wanna go after?" I bring the department head in. Sometimes we do that jointly with the school committee and you folks know what I'm talking about because you've been in those meetings. Ginny, I don't think you have yet, but they will be coming up soon. And we have a discussion about what it is you've got in mind. And I take from that, sometimes you vote, sometimes you don't, but I always get a consensus of what you're thinking. That gives me a parameter or, you know, range limits to what it is I'm gonna negotiate. And then I come back and brief you occasionally, if it's a lengthy one, less occasionally if it's a quick one. And then finally, I bring you back the agreement and say, "Okay, this is within your parameter or it's outside of it here." And then the board has to formally vote to accept it or not and the union has to ratify. So a lot of the elements that were in the old bylaw, we're pretty much doing, although it's not a requirement that we do it that way. And so that's something you should be aware of because this manager's style is to do it that way. But you could have a new town manager in years hence who didn't have anybody on it and you, and he or she would be perfectly within their rights, but perhaps not consistent with the town tradition. So that's something I wanna think about.
I think my question was, and I understand the process of going back and forth. One of my short experience, on the 11th hour, and we have a town manager, a department head, a union rep in telling us something, there's no insight from the selectmen of who's stretching it or who's. So I, my preference would be to have a selectman in there say nothing, but listen and observe as your intern would to give us some insight should things go wrong at the 11th hour. And I, and we don't have to decide tonight, but that, that was what was behind my question. I've heard in the past, it's worked very well. I haven't heard that it hasn't worked very well, but that may not be the case, I don't know. But at least that should be our discussion when we're looking at the.
Wouldn't that be, would that be the question to ask Leo? And it's a pretty simple question, it's a yes or no answer. I mean.
What was the question?
The selectman can be impartial in the interview or during the negotiations, I should say, without talking. Is that conflicting? Is that conflicting to the process?
I think what we need to do probably is have a, we probably would wanna get an opinion from Leo on the legal question, is a board member conflicted out or not? We'd wanna be sure of that because it's kind of similar to liquor hearings where you're not supposed to hear any of the evidence before you vote. So I'd wanna be sure that there wasn't a problem legally.
The way we used to do everything was not the right way.
I don't know.
We don't know that.
I don't know. So you wanna find out the answer to that question, and I will pose that to Leo and have him send you a written opinion. And then the next step.
Is this all clear on that? Not to be part of the negotiation, but to be.
An observer.
An observer, not to speak at all or answer any questions, just observe and can take notes. That's it.
And then, once you have the answer to that question, if it's no, then there's nothing more to talk about. If it's yes, then I think the next step is we need to have a discussion about that in executive session and between the six of us, talk the pros and cons of that.
I'm not sure if that qualifies for executive session. If we're talking about.
Yes, it's strategy with respect to bargaining. It absolutely qualifies, yep. Yes, because inherent in the discussion.
I'll ask Leo that question, too.
I will, but inherent in the discussion is strategy concerning what it is, well, I wouldn't even wanna say. It's executive session.
We'll leave it at that, but those are two good questions to ask, please.
So I just wanted, Larry Ashley, before he had left the board, had asked me to have this be a, a, a gender item and basically indicate what the opinion was, because this had come up at a town meeting and we wanted to be sure the public got this. And I don't see Frank, but I will make sure.
He's back, yeah.
Oh, there you are. Oh, you're hiding tonight, usually up here. I'll give Frank a copy of that.
Is that what was emailed to everybody? That's the same document?
It was some time ago, yeah. Oh, yeah, obviously it didn't. Well, you know, I just have copies made and put in your packets again, no problem.
Okay, are you done with that topic?
Yes.
Yeah, if you wanna just come to the microphone, Dick.
Is it cooler back there? That's why you have Frank? Is it cooler back?
I ask these guys what's going on every five minutes.
Oh.
I think Frank is hair-nayed updated.
This air conditioner is a killer. Anyway. Thanks, Dick.
It's here on purpose, I know. Let me get into this slightly since I brought it up some sixteen months ago. We've talked about it, we've had emails back and forth and what have you. I appreciate the, the copy this evening. However, there's a couple of points I still think are more appropriate than otherwise. I had asked for the specific question that was going to be asked at council. This is more of a general, how the act affects an article of the revised Personnel Bylaw. We all know with attorneys, and I've worked in many over the years, you ask them a question and they give you the answer on that question, never on the overall view unless you keep badgering them more and more to find out what the issue is. But as I read this very quickly, the second paragraph begins, "In my opinion, the TMA modifies and/or repeals." Does it repeal or does it just modify? You know, he leaves the question open and this was part of the question I had raised initially in this area. You go to the last page, it's very similar. There are no requirements that the town manager include any specific position or individual. There are no requirements that the town manager include any specific position or individuals on the bargaining team and leaves to him, so on. Then the next paragraph, that the manager act modifies, if not effectively repeals. Is it modify or repeal? You know, the, the question that I raised was, town meeting, the, the town meeting enacted that legislation which said they wanted a team. And they wanted it to include specific people. I've talked with the wage personnel, board members, not all of them, but several of them, and they all came up with the same conclusion. Andy included them up until the time he, he left the district. This hasn't been going back to two oh oh four. Rebecca will certify this, so will a couple of other of the members. So this was not something that, as of two oh oh four or two oh oh five, when the legislature finally approved this, this was changed and wage personnel didn't exist anymore. That there's nothing that I read in this, and I'm not an attorney. I don't hold long lectures on law. The issue is, however, town meeting made a decision that we wanted five people to do the negotiations. We now have the Town Manager Act, which is taken to say he alone makes the decision. And I don't believe that was the intent of town meeting. I think the issue is, much as all of us have discussed now for two years, the bylaws and the TMA don't agree in many areas, and this is still one of them. You know, if the town meeting after two oh oh four had an article in it which said, we're gonna eliminate the wage personnel board because it's useless, then I'd understand the town meeting action as it is a town meeting forum of government. But we are a town meeting forum of government. That bylaw was passed by the people in general terms. And the, the thing is, I think both exist, and we need to clear this up as far as the, the bylaw, just on this item, but several other items as you go through the process. I think section six of the TMA is probably the most important, and he quotes it in here, that if there's nothing in the TMA act which says that the bylaw is out, it still exists. So the question is, does it still exist or is the attorney hedging when, when, when he, he uses that, that terminology, modifies and/or repeals? That's my basic question and has been for sixteen months.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I know you come to just about every meetings. I don't know if you were at either the last meeting or the meeting before. I think we're at a crossroads now because the town meeting, town, Strong Town Managers' Act is starting to get tested and questioned. We don't have the answer because it's very complex. And it, it makes it even worse that there's two different things, sometimes at odds with each other. So what we asked is, Lorraine is spearheading it. She's gonna reach out to the MMA, put together an entity that either comes to us at a public meeting and educates us, and, and it's gonna be open so those questions can be asked. When, what I had said to Kevin was, because there's a little bit of a conflict of interest, nothing to do with Kevin, but I don't want Kevin's interpretation of the Strong Town Managers' Act. I want an outsider that studies this and presents it for a living to come in and tell us, this is what you have or this is what you don't have. And then we're gonna be in a position, we either understood what we bought into years ago when we implemented it, or we didn't. We want to repeal it, we want to tweak it, or we want to leave it alone. But there's gonna be, we probably have four other items that you could ask on the same issue. We don't know right now, so if you can just be a little patient. I gotta say, some of the stuff you are bringing up, like the next item, the fire department overtime study, we are hearing it, we are acting on it, but it's a little slow. So just bear with us when Lorraine puts that together, then I, I assure you, it will be an open meeting.
Yeah, we've talked on it.
Yep. All right, the next, you want to start? You have a presentation for the fire department overtime analysis?
Yep. Thanks, Randy. The right hour? Okay. The board has been given a very extensive memo on the subject. What I'm gonna try to do is briefly summarize the contents, both for the board, just as a reminder, because you got this back in April, and I know it's probably not as fresh in your mind as you'd like it to be. And then secondly, the public hasn't seen this at all either, so this will be kind of a quick review of what's in here. There's nineteen slides and I'm gonna go through them fairly quickly, so please stop me along the way if you want anything explained. The real point of the meeting tonight is to get into the recommendations section. And I had copies of that made. There's two things I'm gonna refer to afterwards, and that's the recommendations in this chart. So I'll hand these around so that you can.
I think we have these in our packet.
Oh, you got that in your packet? Okay. All right, the, the matrix may have changed a little bit because we continually develop the numbers. I don't think the numbers are different, but I think the presentation's a little different, so I'm gonna give you those. And there's some copies for the public if anybody would like them. And copies of the recommendations too, if anybody would like those. Oh, I'm sorry. Frank, make sure you get one of those, would you, wherever you are. I don't know where Frank went. Save one of those for Frank, please, Randy. Thanks.
I think the one we have in our packet is May twenty fifth.
I'm sorry, Jenny, you didn't get one, did you? Did they give you one, the report? Oh, okay, great.
I need one more when Randy comes up.
Which, which do you need more, the chart?
May twenty ninth.
Okay. We have one more copy of the chart? Ah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, our department overtime analysis. Now, before I start, I just want to say a thank you, thanks, Randy, to the chief and to Randy because this has been a, an enormous body of work. This has consumed literally, I would say, a couple hundred hours of analysis and time. But it has been very revealing in terms of what the conclusions are and some opportunities to do some trimming of overtime, I think, present themselves. So, we talk about two types of overtime, discretionary and unplanned. Discretionary is overtime that we specifically decide we're going to pursue for some reason. Unplanned is overtime, that's unpredictable events, and it's really related to staffing. Some event occurs and we have to replace people or augment the staff to handle that unpredictable event. Discretionary overtime covers fire training, emergency service, that's paramedics and medic basics, public education, that's work that the chief and his staff does in schools and other places. Meetings, that's his command staff that he'll bring together from time to time to have meetings. Inspections that they do for a variety of reasons, and hazardous materials drills. Those are all the categories of overtime that we specifically decide we're going to undertake. The three-year average that you see on this chart, we actually took the last three years in terms of what did we actually spend? And what we found, if you look at all the categories in blue, the ones that I just mentioned, the three-year average of overtime usage ended up comprising about ten percent, or in other words, about forty thou, thirty-five thousand dollars of the, I'm sorry, forty thousand dollars of the three-year average expenses. All those categories combined. So all those categories combined, the message is that's not a big part of the overtime usage. And so trimming in those categories, while it may be appropriate, we've actually done some of that in fiscal thirteen, as we'll talk about. It's not, it doesn't make sense to spend a lot of time working in those categories because no matter what we do, it's not gonna yield a big difference in overtime expense. So we really take a look at unplanned overtime. Now, this is where ninety percent of our expenses are going. Vehicle maintenance recall, when we have a vehicle breakdown and we need to bring the mechanics in on an unplanned basis, on an emergency basis, one category. Storm coverage, when we have large storms, we staff up with extra personnel in order to handle the heightened level of emergencies. Fire investigations that are unpredictable, arson, suspected arson cases, things like that. Fire alarms, again, fire alarm comes in, we have, how many connections into our master panel? Hundred and?
Six, six hundred.
And those are primarily the businesses, and if we have an alarm, we may have to respond on an emergency basis and bring people into backfill for the folks that have left the station. Hazardous material incidents, you know what those are, truck rollovers, we have a whole variety of stuff there. And those, by the way, while they are not that common, when they do happen, can be enormously consumptive of staff resources. We sometimes have to bring in essentially the whole department.
Isn't that reimbursable by insurance company?
Partially, partially.
So why would, my question, why would it be on there?
Well, due to the fact that we have some aspects, for example, last.
Come on up, Raj.
Eric, you want to come to the table?
Oh, yeah.
No, that's actually a very true statement, except for the aspects that when the spill happens on town property. Last year, for example, we had a spill off of somebody's truck, spiller was, drove away, so it's an unknown speller. And it landed, lands up being on town property. We have to pick up the cost of the cleanup. And, you know, it's not as much the, the aspect of us dealing with it as it's taking care of that waste. Huge money, very expensive cost, just to take care of a five gallon pail of hazardous waste.
So just, so hazmat incident, if it's got overtime involved, would basically ninety percent of it be covered? I just want to have a.
Right. I think, I think one of the things that, again, Mr. Haydecker having conversations with me for the last two years, and as Randy and Kevin know, we do have four of our members that are hazmat techs as part of the regional team. So what ends up happening is, is that when they go out and they, they respond to an actual incident in another community, we pay for their overtime, but we get reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts a hundred percent. So we have a revenue source for that, and it goes into a special account and it balances off, but. Yes, yeah. And the, you know, but the only other thing that you, we have to look at is that, knock on wood, we haven't had very many incidents in the town. In the ones that we have, we've been able to work very closely, like we had with Rice Water at one time. And we work very closely with the state and everybody to try to reduce as much of the cost as we can by using our folks.
It also depends on the insurance limits for the entity that has the spill. If it's a car accident, we've got a couple of cars with a gasoline spill and maybe some oil and maybe some antifreeze fluid. Generally speaking, your own private car insurance is gonna cover the cleanup costs. We need to do a better job at the billing and we're just beginning to get into that. But if you have a tanker go, you know, they may or may not have insurance adequate to cover the full expense, so we may only get part of that expense back. We may get it all back too. So there's nothing definite in terms of what we're gonna get back, but.
Yeah, well, that is awesome. I mean, maybe that's something that comes down to state senate level where they, you know, certain liabilities have to be one million, two million to be on a job site. And the DOT must regulate what these guys have to carry with, with what they're carrying as far as, you know, insurance goes for. I mean, I just, they, they don't, my, they don't allow me to go anywhere without the correct manifest or anything else or identification, and my insurance company automatically knows what I have because that's what it's based on. So I, I just don't imagine the DOT lets that slide by.
Well, I think that, I think the point.
Do that or they better catch up.
Yeah, I, I think the point is, is that this is one of the smaller areas that we've been very successful in, in regards to, you know, the town of Foxborough. But a perfect example could be Rentham next door where they had a situation and the property owner didn't have the appropriate insurances and, and basically stuck to town with the cost. Knock on wood, we haven't had that happen yet.
Additional categories of unplanned is minimum staffing. A minimum staffing is the one that we're gonna talk about the most tonight. That's when we have a vacancy and we need to bring people back to meet our current minimum staffing standard. EMS emergency recall is exactly what it sounds like. There are occasions when we don't have, for instance, enough paramedics on, on a particular shift. We'll have a paramedic level incident, we'll have to bring more in. And finally, box and still alarms. Box alarms are alarms that come in that task more than the amount of staff available. Most common one that you've heard of is mutual aid. That's, that's the biggie. So let's talk about that a little bit more. These categories right here of unplanned, unplanned overtime, which are the small ones, together account for six percent of our three-year average. So, vehicle maintenance recall, storm coverage, fire investigation, fire alarm, hazmat, and EMS emergency recall are small categories. Again, working to try to reduce these might involve a lot of work and would probably produce, yield very little result. So it's really not the place where we're gonna concentrate our effort. But there are a couple of recommendations for both the planned overtime and the unplanned. Together, these comprise somewhere around sixteen, seventeen percent of our overtime usage. Not a lot, but there is some stuff we can do. So, let's talk about the categories where we're really spending the money. And that's minimum staffing and box and still alarms. Those two categories combined equal eighty-four percent of all the overtime money we've spent on average for the last three years. This is where the big dollars are. This is where the majority of what we've looked at is what I'm gonna chat with you about tonight. The basic policy decision that drives both categories of expenditure are the six firefighter EMT minimum staff. Now, here's what that means. Our shifts, our twenty-four hour shifts, as you know, they run with seven firefighters or firefighter EMTs. So if one firefighter EMT does not report for work, illness, vacation, whatever, we don't hire back, we don't have any in, overtime incurred. When the second firefighter EMT normally scheduled on the shift calls in, we immediately incur additional expense. You with me? So this is a key fundamental policy decision. And later tonight, under the recommendations section, I'm gonna ask the board to examine that and take a position to reiterate support for that because the board hasn't had that discussion in a long time. It so happens that I think we collectively agree that's a good standard, but it's a major policy level decision that this board should, should buy into. Because the implication of it is we accept a lot of overtime. And if you don't agree with it, then I'm going to tell you that's going to be a somewhat controversial decision. And we'll explain what the pros and cons are. But this is the key policy decision which informs eighty-four percent of what we spend. Okay? So box and still alarms, this type of expense is caused by incidents which commit scheduled staff, all of it, and then require additional staff. The most common examples, brush fires, which can cause us to bring in basically everybody we can find. Mutual aid calls, which can be, again, essentially the entire department depending upon the call. And that is supposed to be multiple, simultaneous, multiple calls. That is not an acronym, that is a misspelling. And that's simply, if we have two simultaneous auto accidents, we commit two EMTs, two additional personnel for the pump truck, that's four folks. We only have six on, let's say, and if we have a second car accident, we've immediately got to strike a box and bring in more personnel. Because, and unfortunately, we don't have the ability to necessarily decide who is going to come because we don't get a huge response. So we may get more than we need, we may not get enough, but that's basically the nature of what we have to deal with. Shift staffing, now this is the category that far and away is the predominant amount. To give you a number, the three-year average expense for overtime in the fire department, fiscal ten, eleven, and twelve, right off your chart, was four hundred and forty-one thousand. Of that, two hundred and ninety-five thousand alone is this category. So this is the big category. This is seventy-five percent of the expense right here. What is shift staffing? Again, seven firefighter EMT shift is our minimum, I'm sorry, is our normal. Six is our minimum, so if you have seven is the normal complement, and one is out for any reason, the very next reason somebody's out causes us to bring someone in on overtime. What are the events that cause that? Vacation leave, personal leave, sick leave, injury on duty. In Massachusetts, fire and police officers are not under workman's comp. They're under a special law, chapter one eleven F, that provides them a different benefit if they're injured on duty, and we have to replace them. And we have to replace them at time and a half. Military duty, bereavement leave, and administrative leave. Administrative leave is on occasion. When we have typically disciplinary charges pending, we may put somebody on paid administrative leave, pending completion of the disciplinary hearing, pending an investigation, pending a court proceeding, whatever. So that's what that one is. So these are the categories which cause us to have to engage in shift staffing. Contributing to shift staffing is all these other reasons as well. So if somebody is out for a box or a still alarm, I'm sorry, if somebody's out for vacation and we're already down one firefighter, and then we get a box alarm and it's a big mutual aid call, and we've got six on, but we need, you know, twenty people over in Mansfield for a five alarm fire, then we can have a huge amount of overtime incurred in order to bring in people because we're having two combined events at the same time. And that is not uncommon.
Can I ask how much military do we have in the last year?
I can tell you exactly.
Yep.
In the last, in the last two years, Rod, you've got the separate chart there? Rod will tell you how many days, it's in the memo, broken down by how many days we've- We invited the AdCom tonight per the board's instructions. Are you the liaison?
I don't know what I am.
Yeah, sure.
Quick question. The most important member is the minimum staffing, yet there's no breakdown of the minimum staffing. My guess is vacation, personal time, and holiday are the top three.
We're, we're gonna get into that. We do have a breakdown. I haven't presented it yet, but we will get into it. And in the memo, it's broken down in excruciating detail.
We don't have the memo, so.
Okay.
Hey, get the memo.
Get the memo. We will get you the memo. Did you find that?
Yeah, I, I found the actual two thousand.
All right, I'll, I'll give you the numbers.
Well, we're gonna break this down later, is my, is that you?
I'm not gonna break these down per se, so I'll give them to you right now. Military leave in fiscal ten was eight hundred and sixty-seven hours.
Yeah.
In fiscal eleven, it was two thousand two hundred and eight hours. And there is none this year.
No, no, that's not-
FY twelve, year-to-date is how many hours?
Three thou- three thousand seventy-five.
And that individual is back now, correct?
Yeah. Just so everybody knows, we have one of our members that is gone, gone off to be a Black Hawk pilot and an officer with the National Guard. And so his training started in two thousand ten, and he just completed it in two thousand thirteen.
So, so the town covers the military leave?
What we do is we, we don't cover his, we cover a percentage of the differences because of the union contract, but that's not all that big because he's an officer. Where it really got us is on the time and a half to fill his position while he was gone.
While he's away, there's training, we have to fill the position if more than-
If somebody else-
Right, and that's an overtime hit.
Right.
So-
I didn't know, I didn't know we had anybody.
Yes, we have actually one of our members.
I thought, I thought we anticipated one leaving, I didn't know we had, already had one.
One.
He was gone the better part of a year, correct?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months. Question, Lorraine?
Can, when you have a situation like that where there would be such an extended period of time out, is there any ability to hire a temporary employee of the fire department?
First of all, the union contract has the members get the right, first right of refusal. And so that would be a negotiated item in that aspect.
The short answer is yes, maybe, and it's one of the things to talk about under recommendations because it would, it would involve collective bargaining, for sure.
Okay.
We don't have a unilateral right to do it. I guess that's the best answer.
Okay.
So to give you a flavor for this, one vacancy per shift equals three, three hundred and sixty-five days, that's how many shifts we cover, twenty-four hour shifts, times twenty-four hours is eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours. So here's what we're working with. We can have collectively with all categories of unplanned absence, eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours of absent time with no overtime implication. Following me? In other words, seven firefighters on shift, we don't have an overtime implication till we get down to five. So if one firefighter was off every shift, it's eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours before we incur overtime. Follow that?
So that brings it from six to seven, or from five to six?
No, that's just bringing you from seven to six. So one firefighter per shift, all those shifts, it's twenty-four hours, so it's three hundred and sixty-five days, one year.
Oh, no, so you have one, it goes from seven people down to six people?
Right. So we can have, we can have eight thousand-
So you don't have to automatically fund that to bring it back up to seven?
No. We, we hire back to six, not seven. But we can have with that seventh, that seventh person, if that seventh person is absent from every shift, we can have eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours of absent time before we incur overtime. Now what I'm gonna show you is why this doesn't work. We give, we took all the vacation that currently our firefighter EMTs have earned. Now, remember, that's a sliding scale depending upon years of service. So the more years of service, the more vacation you get. Right now, this year, our firefighters currently on staff would get four thousand four hundred and sixty-four hours of vacation time. That's divided between all thirty-two, I believe, members. Some get more, some get less, but the total is four thousand four hundred and sixty-four hours. They all get four days per year of personal time. So if you multiply that times current staffing, that's one thousand sixty-four hours of absence allowed for personal time. Holiday leave, firefighters in Massachusetts per statute, not collective bargaining agreement, can take certain holidays off, or they can get paid for them and work them. If they take them off, then we have to fill back. The chief did an analysis and we found that a certain percent, about a quarter,
Yep.
Take the day off, the rest work it and get paid essentially double time and a half?
No, straight time.
Straight, uh, straight time. But for those who take it off, who wanna have the holiday, we've gotta backfill, potentially backfill with overtime. So that adds up to one thousand and one hours. Now, that's an average number. That's not a hard number. That's an average number, okay? So-
If someone's not taking sick time or not taking the holiday and somebody else is filling in for them, so you're gonna pay that person, if they're not taking the sick time, is it, do they accrue it, or do they lose it at the end of the year? Is this-
They accrue it. And there's limits on how much they can accrue, but we're gonna show you how sick time impacts this too. So remember, there's eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours that can be vacant before we incur overtime. Now, it doesn't always happen neatly like that, but this is theoretical. We can have one person per shift off the entire year and there's no overtime incurred. That's eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours. But watch what happens. Current leave benefits that I just showed you, vacation, personal time, and holiday time, adds up to six thousand five hundred and twenty-nine hours. We know those hours are gonna be taken. Follow me? Because those are benefits that no one is not gonna take. So we've only got two thousand two hundred and thirty-one hours of overtime before we begin incurring, I mean, two thousand two hundred and thirty-one hours of time before we start incurring overtime. That's only ninety-three shifts. For any reason, ninety-three twenty-four hour shifts, for any reason, all those other reasons, sick time, IOD, military leave, all that. So if we have more than ninety-three shifts, we start running up the OT bill. So let's take a look at what has been the case for the last few years. Here's the categories. Injury on duty, military, bereavement, administrative, box alarm, and then et cetera, because you've got all these other categories feeding in there too. But these are the primary ones right here that drive overtime. So let's take a look at the three-year averages, and the numbers are on this chart, but I'm gonna give you the distillation of it. For the last three years, we've had a total, this is for the whole department, of two thousand two hundred and forty-one hours per year. It's broken down into a lot more detail in the memo in terms of how many hours per person and all that sort of thing. So you can refer to that for more detail. Injury on duty, this is people who get injured in the course of being a firefighter and EMT. For the last three years, it's averaged one thousand eight hundred and eighty-three hours per year. Administrative leave has been two hundred and sixty-three hours per year average. Military, one thousand twenty-five hours per year. And it's actually, that number does not include what fiscal twelve was because at the time of this writing, we didn't know when that individual was coming back, so we didn't include twelve. So that number is probably six or seven hundred hours greater, okay? And bereavement was ninety-six hours a year. That totals five thousand five hundred and eight hours on average for the last three years that those categories have caused firefighter EMTs to be absent from work. So, remember, we've only got twenty-two hundred hours after we compute vacation, personal leave, and-
Holiday.
Holiday, thank you. We've only got, those are absolutely sure absences. We've only got twenty-two hundred hours left before we begin incurring overtime. And what we know is that for the last three years, on average, we've incurred five thousand five hundred and eight. So obviously, we have three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven hour shortfall just considering those few categories, and that's a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar cost.
At time and a half or straight time?
Time and a half. Now, that's a theoretical application, and the reason we, it never happens as neatly as that because we don't have one firefighter per shift out. We may have three on one shift, none on another shift, five on another shift, one on another shift. So it's never as neat. What we're, what we're trying to illustrate here is that if the fire, if the personnel in the department take their vacation, their holiday leave, and their personal leave, we've already used up almost all the time that we can have out before we begin incurring. And that's because of the six officer minimum staffing requirement. Because we can only drop, we can only have one out before we hit overtime. You with me?
Can you just go back two slides just real quick? One more. That one there.
Yep.
All those hours, sick, IOD, admin, military, and bereavement, those are all covered under their union contract?
Yes.
Even, so if they take admin time for whatever?
No, admin is not covered under the union contract. That's something that we impose.
And just so you know, the biggest component of admin is when we had the new firefighter, that we had to go to, send him to recruit school for twelve weeks. That's, that's the big one. Out of all of those, the biggest expense that has really impacted the fire department budget is IOD because we've had some severe injuries, and I can talk about that in, in great detail, and a military leave, bereavement, and then, because those categories have no budget line. There's just, we just exorbit in that, that minimum staffing. So I think the one thing that I will say is that since I've been here, Randy Scollins in, in the town has allowed me to expand our tracking in showing exactly where all the funds are going. We've gone from having, I think it was, used to be eleven categories, up to nineteen categories now. And, but those are some of the things that we've found, is that these things happen, but we don't fund for them. We don't, we don't, we don't plan for it.
Now, this is a three-year average, but you've also implemented programs to address some of this stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that right now. But the important thing to take away from this analysis, and it's done in much, much more detail. I mean, I've just given you nineteen slides, I think thirteen pages or something. The important thing to take away is that because we have a six officer minimum staff and we run a seven-person crew regularly, we can only have one person per shift out before we begin incurring overtime. That is the big driver. So if you have enough time in the contract, which firefighters have a right to take, and that adds up to three quarters of the time that we have to give off before we incur overtime, and then you factor in sick time and IOD and all this other, and it adds up to a lot more than what we can have off before we incur overtime. You can see the nature of the problem. That's what we're dealing with. Now, we can't, you notice on your chart, under minimum staffing, you've got all those categories of leave. Here's what we can't tell you today, but here's what we will be able to tell you a year from now. The nature of record keeping in the past, and this is pretty much universal, has been when the first person who calls in for some absence, calls in, they're just recorded in the leave category. When the next person calls in, the overtime is charged to that account. Now, the overtime event was actually caused by the combination of the first event, which brought us from six, seven to six, and then the second event that brought us from six to seven. So let's say the first firefighter EMT on the shift calls in and says, I'm sick, I won't be in. We've now gone from seven to six, no overtime. A second person calls in and says, I'm gonna take a vacation day. We're now down to five, and we now have to backfill one person on overtime. The event that caused it wasn't the vacation, it was the combination of the vacation and the sick time. It was both. So what we're going to start doing on July first, and we've got a gigantic chart that the chief has prepared, that's going to take for every single shift and every single person, exactly what events caused the overtime to be incurred. One year from now, we'll be able to take all these categories and we'll be able to tell you exactly how many days of sick leave actually caused overtime, how much vacation, how much holiday, et cetera. Because remember, a person can be out sick, and if that's the only vacancy on the shift, no overtime. But if two people are out sick, overtime. So right now, because of the nature of the record keeping, we can't tell you what events are actually driving it. What we can only tell you is sort of on a gross scale. Here's how many days you can have people out, here's how many days we had them out, we know this is what drove our overtime. Next year, we'll be able to say very specifically, what did we do? So what's gonna happen now, we're gonna track it every month. Each month, the chief, Randy and I are gonna sit down, we're gonna produce a report that'll be a lot less numbers than this. It'll be basically, here's our fiscal thirteen budget, as you can see in that column. Here's the amount of overtime we had for the month of July. Here's what caused it, and here's how we're tracking against the budgeted amount. So we've got three hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and two dollars budgeted. We've got it allocated into a few categories. And we're gonna track it against those categories, and we're gonna see as we get into the year, how are we doing, and where are we getting into trouble, and what's causing it? So we're gonna be able to give you a far, far better, a much higher level of sophistication in terms of overtime usage than we've ever been able to do before. That tracking combined with these recommendations is gonna produce a good result. So what are the recommendations? I'm sorry.
Total number of hours for one FTE per year?
Total amount of hours.
Total number of hours per FTE. One full-time.
Well, it'd be thirty-two people times-
No, 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 one, one person works how many hours in a year?
Oh, oh.
Basically, every week turns out, though it looks like it's forty-eight hours, because it's a rotating schedule, it works out to be a forty-two hour work week every week. So forty-two times fifty-two is what it would be.
That would give you the average total amount of hours before you apply all the leave categories, which would reduce that number.
And, and the other thing is, is that we have to look at-
Did you follow that, Lorraine?
Is, is it-
So it's-
Take, take my week. It's a forty-hour week.
Two thousand one hundred and eighty-four hours a year each, if each firefighter works.
Yeah, it's probably easy to illustrate.
That would probably answer your question a lot easier without, and I didn't make that public because it's dealing with personnel names and stuff, but, um, well, again, it's giving her an idea what the hours are.
It averages forty-two, but because of the way the schedule falls, day on, two days off, a day on, five days off, it's a, it averages forty-two hours per week per year. That's the average.
They just, they all look different.
Yeah, but what happens here is that it goes by their, how many years they've been serving for the, the community. Nearly out of the twenty-eight members, twenty-six of them, if I'm not mistaken, are at max. That means they've been with us for a long time, they've get their maximum vacation, they get their maximum, they all get the personal leave, they all get the holiday leave. So you have twenty-eight people, and some of them are, um, basically, you'll see their sick leave, some of them are maxed out on their sick leave, and some are not. So the sick leave is a moving number, but on the vacation, the personal leave, the holiday leave, that's all standard numbers. And, and some of them are different because they've been with the community for a long period of time.
What I was looking at was just when you take, you know, your mandatory coverage hours are really your vacation, personal, holiday. So you've got sixty-five hundred hours in total there. I was just trying to understand, you know, how many FTEs does that translate into? Because you have to cover it no matter what.
Right. How many hours does an individual firefighter end up working once those leave categories are applied? I don't think we know that number now, but it reduces the total forty-two times fifty-two. It reduces it very substantially, obviously.
And, and we have some folks that will take the overtime and some that don't. And so it's, it's a moving target on each individual. And, and we have some folks that will take the overtime and some that don't. And so it's, it's, it's a moving target on each individual. We can, when we did the analysis of looking exactly everybody's earned time with what we budget, we are eighty-nine hu, and, and with that flexible position from seven to six,
Mm-hmm.
uh, we're still eighty-nine hundred dollars, uh, short in that, in budgeting for that account.
When, when do you get the number forty-two? It's forty-eight hours a week.
No, it actually averages the forty-two a week if you figure it over a, a twenty-eight-day cycle. Well, it's a twenty-eight-day cycle, fairly of a standards act says. Either do it on a five-day cycle or a twenty-eight-day cycle.
They work twenty-four hour shifts.
Right.
Is there a deduction for lunch and personal?
No, no, it's because it's a mo...
Are you talking gross loads?
Because it moves. It's a moving. Sometimes you might work this week, um, one day, and then your next day might be Sunday. That's another calendar week. Because it's a rotating schedule, you have to look at the amount of hours they work in an annual year. So it comes out to forty-two hours.
Right. So here, here the...
Before we go into the recommendations, um, yeah, can I, I know there's at least three members of the AdCom. I don't know if there's a liaison or a spokesman. Can you just come to the table? Before, uh, there's a bunch of recommendations. There's thirteen in all. But you guys do the heavy lis, lifting with the AdCom in looking at the numbers before we get into the recommendations, so we can just hear your input. Are you the liaison?
No.
I'm not, yeah.
You are, okay.
Ah, there you go. We talked about this during this budget season, and we've been waiting for this overtime analysis for a while, so I'm glad it's here today. You know, I think, without even, before, without even getting to the recommendations, it's pretty clear to me that, that, um, if we increase the staffing from seven to eight and keep your, whatever that trips your overtime, you're immediately gonna force overtime off the table. And then the things that really need to be addressed, if you look at the things that, that takes very minimum staffing, that should take the majority of the overtime off the table. And then you've got sick time and I O D. Sick time can be managed with incentives
Yep.
that I haven't seen anybody talk about, but I think that'll be an easy way to get that money back. And then the I O Ds clearly figure out what's caused the I O Ds
And we have done that.
and call liberty mutual and have them, you know, work out why people are injured on duty. And, I mean, the members speak for themselves. If we wait another year to get results out of this, we have an open contract. We can go from twenty-four hour shifts, go back to different shifts where you can minimize, to your point, Lorraine, where you go with the F T Es. If one guy's out on a shift and vacation, it costs the town twenty-four hours. If we go back to the old way of running the fire department, and one guy's out, we're only gonna lose whatever, there's twelve, twelve-hour shifts in the old days, I don't remember what they were.
Twelves and tens.
Twelves and tens. So, you know, we haven't finished closing the contract. We've got opportunity to negotiate some points here to get some overtime back. And we can get some guys working that, you know, maybe they're not working now, but they can get straight time on the fire department as full-time F T Es instead of everybody stocking up the overtime and costing the town more money. And, I mean, I've been here a half an hour listening to this, and I've been waiting six months for it. And it's pretty black and white to me, and, you know, we, we should go with this thing, but, uh, you know, it's, I'm pretty direct here, so.
No, that's why I, I saw you back there, and I'm, I, I think you are the new liaison now. Whether you want it or not.
That's what I would do with thirty thousand people, without knowing the details and the nuances of how the fire department works and, um, but to sit here and have to study it another year, I don't think you have to study it. I think you should put some stuff in place today that are pretty obvious from the open slides.
No, absolutely. You, you put stuff in place, but you, you have a contract, you can't...
What, I tell you, no markets, I connect, can you go to eight? Because it's probably...
You, you would have to, with an open contract and negotiating right now, you would have to go into that with the contract. You'd have to put that on the table with, I'm sure, incentive.
But then, you know, because the flip side of that is, you also have the twenty-four hour shifts, you can, you know, you don't wanna go to eight. Then let's talk about, you know, doing three shifts or whatever, three on, four off, whatever that actual schedule was. You know, I think everybody in town and everybody in corporate America is looking at the expense lines. And, and, you know, I, you know, myself, I inherited an operation that we used to incur a hundred and fifty thousand dollars overtime a year. We incur ten thousand of overtime a year. You know, it's, it's managed, it has to be managed. If it isn't managed by the chief or whoever has to manage it, you're not gonna see the number come down.
This also can be an unpredictable management chore. That's, that's like last...
I, I agree, but the things that you can take off the table are the things that you have vacation, the, the, the top three things up there are vacation, whatever it is, holiday, personal. And you just know to where Lorraine was going, like, figure out what that F T E compliment is, and like, you know, if it's three, if you hired, like I said, go to like, you know, eight instead of seven, you're gonna make back that overtime. We have the same discussion with the police chief on the same topic. And, you know, the, 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 the union has to give a little bit because, you know, I think, you know, we, we gotta get some savings to the town. This is just insane running it, you know, the same way over and over without changing anything. So.
And just so the people that know, you, you didn't introduce yourself, but you've been on the AdCom for a while. This is your second stint, you're a numbers guy and an analysis guy.
Yeah.
You know, picking this up for the first time today.
No, we've been through AdCom already, and this, yeah, this is my, now fourth one, so I might get here and add some.
Mr. Heideck, Mr. Heideck, I don't know if he's gonna see him through the chat.
Thank you.
Uh, actually, Dick, I will recognize you, but let's just finish the, um, I just don't wanna open up to more. You know, with this. Just be patient, but we, let, let us, let him get through his presentation first. Anyone from the AdCom that wanted to add to that? John? No? All right. You wanna keep going, Kevin, then, on the recommendations?
Sure. Um, I don't, the AdCom hasn't had an opportunity to see this before, and I know, um,
Yes.
um, we will get this memo, I apologize, I thought you guys had gotten it, but we'll make sure you get this tomorrow morning. And we welcome
Roger.
uh, the AdCom's participation. They've got a pretty good brain trust there. So we're gonna get the reports with them, which includes the recommendation and all the numbers. And, um, I think the chief and Randy and I look forward to some further discussions with them because they've probably got some ideas that maybe we haven't thought of. And so we certainly would, uh, like to go through that. So here are some very specific recommendations for you. First, the six firefighter minimum shift staff should be reviewed. Now, this is the policy decision that drives seventy-five to eighty percent of the expenditures. Change that, six firefighter minimum staff, and you drastically alter these numbers. So, that policy decision has not been visited by this board, I'm told, in quite a number of years. I've had the advantage of sitting with the chief, um, in private with Randy, and going through why we have that staff policy. But I don't think the board has heard it, and I think Roger should take a moment to explain to you why we have it, and the board should, whether you do it tonight or you do it in the future, the board should reiterate or indicate a change. Now, before Raj does that, I will tell you. If you reiterate, if you say basically, yep, we're happy with the six firefighter shift, great, then we know that that's the standard. But that means a lot of this overtime is gonna continue to be incurred because of those simple numbers I just showed you. On the other hand, if you wanna take a look at altering it, then you have to understand, there's only a couple of ways to do that. You can look at seasonal altering. In other words, you take times of year when you roll the dice, and you say, this time of year, we have fewer brush fires, or we have fewer chimney fires, so we're gonna try to go with a five minimum staff. I will tell you right now that the very first time that that doesn't work, i.e. somebody gets hurt, somebody gets killed, whatever, there will be people who will be claiming and blaming this board for that person's injury or death. And you have seen it happen, you saw it happen in Haverhill not too long ago. I have been making this decision as a town manager in other communities and have gone through those accusations over and over again. And I will tell you, it is not a, a pleasant place to be. I tell the board this as a preface to the, to this discussion on this topic, so that you understand what the implications are. Because it is very much a guessing game. There are general patterns of usage, but you can't say at any given moment, what's gonna happen? This is emergency services. So we can say, the month of blank is a relatively quiet time, not a lot of brush fires, not a lot of chimney fires, people out of town on vacation. Let's drop to five man, and as soon as we do that, bang, the next day, we have three car wrecks and whatever it is.
Can you concur with that, Roger?
I think that any time that you try to use any type of graph to short shift anything is dangerous, especially when we're multi-fashionate. We have not ju, we're not just a fire department, we're not just an EMS service, we're both. And when you start looking at all the curves, they, they overlap. It's way too dangerous, and, uh, I think that it's been pretty clear in the two years that I've actually presented budgets to you folks, um, that I've been trying to get to eight. And to drop below six is dangerous for this community, and I will never support that.
Number two?
Well, uh, Ms. Chairman, I think you got a question.
Okay, sure.
In terms of, um, you know, you have your minimum staffing level at six, and then you end up having to call in mutual aid. At what point does it make, is there any consideration given into calling in private ambulance support as a service?
I think, I think right now, um, first of all, mutual aid is only called in when all of our assets are being deployed somewhere. That means that we have two medicals going on, and we have a building fire, uh, and we, we have more resources that are coming in from other communities, and that is at zero cost to the town. Vice versa, when they have something, we go and assist them at no cost to their town. Right now, if you watch what we've been doing for the last two years with our ambulance receipts and answering the questions of, is it beneficial for us to be running the ambulance service versus a private? I think that it's been obviously seen that, that to back it up with a private, they, they're gonna want, they want the whole thing. Or supplementing it, they're gonna still want the whole thing. It's still gonna cost a town for their contract because they wanna ma, they need to make a profit.
I'm, I'm trying to look at it, though, as an alternative to additional overtime.
Well, I think that, again, you're not gonna be able to find a private identity to come in and just pick up a small piece. I guess this is what I'm trying to say, is that they're not gonna come and pick up a, a small slice if they can't have the whole pie.
Well, let, let me make one comment, Raj.
Well, that is true, Randy. They have to make a profit.
Yeah, I've actually done a study on this, uh, several times in other communities, and basically, he, here's the dilemma. The reason fire departments took over EMS service years ago is because fire departments, by their nature, sit and wait for an event to happen. So a lot of what a fire department does, old days, prior to EMS, was the, the, um, you know, the cliche of sitting in the station watching TV. That's not very accurate anymore, because what happened is the fire service very shrewdly recognized that if they continued with that kind of a model, the public would get impatient and say, wait a minute, we can't afford to have people sitting around doing nothing. So they said, hey, we're gonna take over EMS service. Remember in the old days, when I started in management, the police did that and weren't terribly well-trained. It was first responder training. So over the years, we've engaged fire departments pretty much universally to take over EMS, and it's gotten more and more and more sophisticated, culminating now with the town deciding to adopt the ALS level of service, advanced life support. Towns don't have to have ALS, a lot don't, but we've made the decision we wanted. What does that get you? What that gets you is a highly-trained professional paramedic on your doorstep, typically in three to five minutes, to put electricity on your heart to get you going again. That's the critical thing. The American Heart Association's standard is two to four minutes because that's the window in which application of electricity is gonna save your life or not. All the other events that can happen, you got more time to take. So, we've adopted that standard. Now, here's the implication. Because a fire department, by its nature, sits and waits for events to happen, we have people that sit there waiting. We can afford to offer EMS service at a relatively cheap price because we're double-duting. They're both firefighters, and they're EMS, so they're waiting for two events to occur. A private ambulance service waits for one event, the, the medical event, because they're not firefighters. So all of the private EMS services work on a regional basis, not a one-town basis. And basically, what they do is they try to position crews in different places to maximize, um, the, the, to minimize the amount of downtime for those crews and maximize the response time. But because of the nature of it, non-municipal or private EMS is much slower response times in general than municipally-based systems because of the regional nature of it. They're a lot farther away, and their redundancy, their backup, is not as robust as ours is. But we pay a price for that, and that price is some of what you're looking at. But it's a conscious decision that the community makes when they say, we want ALS service, we want that high level of paramedic service, but there's a big premium you pay for it. In towns that bid privatizing it, there is a universal experience because the company can't make enough money to pay those crews to sit there and wait. They have to require the town to make a payment to them to make up the difference. And in every place you see it, Brockton, there's a bunch of other towns that do it, there's the receipt of the ambulance, uh, money from the insurance company, and there's a premium the town pays as well.
I, I don't think privatization is one of the recommendations, correct?
The question was just asked.
Was it?
I'm, I'm not suggesting that we privatize ambulance services. I'm just saying, here, we have a situation where we're, as supplement, that's all, that, throwing it out there to look at.
And supplementing is all the more the case because with supplementation, the delta between the cost of the crew and the number of ones you get becomes astronomical. And so the chief's right. What the companies will say is either you're gonna pay us a huge amount of money to stand by, or we want all the business.
I'm just suggesting, I don't know, like, does the Mass General, uh, building have their own ambulance support? Is there some, I'm just suggesting it's something to look at as we try and come up with solutions to this.
Again, I think that, I think that, um, that really the answer to your question is that when we fall out of sync, when we have not enough resources, mutual aid's coming in, meaning it's either coming from Mansfield, Norfolk, Walpole, Sharon, at no cost to the town.
Okay.
And vice versa. When they're out and we can accommodate, we do.
Okay.
Let, let me suggest this, because we've got thirteen recommendations. If we spend fifteen minutes on each one, we're never gonna get out of here. Kevin, why don't you go through, and you probably have to bite your tongue, let them go through all of them, and then you're, and then you can comment afterwards.
And then the board wanna come back?
We'll come back afterwards, but I just, I'd like to hear all the recommendations, and then we'll go back and visit them if we have to.
In fairness, Jim, it's very difficult to keep you trained a thought from all those, you know, and...
No, I understand that, but if we spend even ten minutes on each one, we're gonna be here for another two hours.
Right, yeah, I understand that. Um, 'cause I have so much to rebuttal already, it's, it's killing me to sit here and hush up, but I'll, 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 I'll...
Well, let me, let me go a step further. I think at the end of this exercise, I'm not ready to vote or recommend on any of these.
I agree.
I think we just absorb it, and have it, uh, come back at a second meeting, kind of an executive session, and, and pick it apart a little bit. But it's nine-thirty now. If we spend two more hours, we're gonna be in no position to have any type of a...
Well, as far as recommendations goes, the board has them. Why would we have to publicly read them? I mean, the, we don't even have to go down that route. If we're not gonna comment, then we don't even have to read them. It's public knowledge, the paper has them, we can just move on.
But I, I don't know, it's up to the board, but I, I, I think there's a benefit to hear the discussion.
When are we gonna have discussion? When will we have discussion on them then?
I know, we can have discussion on them, but what I'm saying, if we discuss each one ten or fifteen minutes, it's gonna go into a second night or a third night after that with the recommendations. What I'm suggesting is, Kevin, if you can just go through them, you go through whatever things that sticks out, and then we can go back and talk about any one. I mean, it's taken twenty minutes just on this one, that's what I'm saying.
You know, the rest of this night is gonna be, that's all.
Hit it, baby.
It's, it is what it is. That's what it is.
Okay. Item two is very simple. As you saw, there's a number of collective bargaining agreement provisions, sick leave, vacation, benefits, which, if those were lower, there would be less overtime. Now, that is a decision that this board has to make, um, as a labor parameter, if you want to, uh, negotiate alterations to any of those benefits. I will tell you, we haven't done a formal comparison, um, but I do have the benefit of seeing, having seen a lot of these. I don't think our benefit levels are out of line with other communities. So, before you would consider going after any of those, my suggestion would be let us do a survey, if you have any interest in that, and see if we're out of line. But I don't think we are. So, um, changing the collective bargaining agreement, as you know, is a lot more complicated than it seems. So. Item three, chief should establish an OT training budget and submit that. Now, there's two or three things here where I've said, the chief should sub, uh, submit budgets, uh, as, plans as part of his budget. These are planned discretionary overtime. So instead of we spend whatever on them, the chief, as part of his annual budget, submits a plan that says, here's what I'm gonna do with overtime, um, training, here's what I'm gonna do with public education. And as part of the budget process, we review that, and the board has its recommendation, I have mine, the AdCom has theirs. And we set a number on this piece of paper in the budget, and the chief knows that's all he's got. He doesn't have more. If you look at, in the report, you'll see that there's a fair difference between what was budgeted and what was expended. And what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get a corral on the plan stuff so that we don't spend more than we budget. And what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get a corral on the plan stuff so that we don't spend more than we budget. That's items three and four. Item five, the recall of personnel due to various emergencies should be reviewed with the chief and a vote taken to endorse or modify the current policy. The reasons the chief decides to strike an alarm and bring people back is a, is a specific policy. He makes certain decisions in order to do that. And that drives this average forty, let's see, it's an average of seventy thousand dollars a year in cost. So, you should review that and make sure that you're comfortable with all those parts of that policy and agree with the chief in that regard. Unplanned OT categories in general should be budgeted. And then we track them and make sure that we don't go over that. Chief's done an excellent work setting up that master spreadsheet, and we're gonna be tracking those now and following it. Item seven, the chief has started a very good program of sick leave analysis. And I won't go through all the details with you, but if you look in the body of the report, you'll see that he's already done some good things. What we discovered, and it's completely typical, is that in general, the personnel in the fire department are not using a lot of sick time per firefighter. There are a very few number of people who are using a lot of time, and that's spiking the overall into some ver- fairly significant numbers. What we have to find out for those few individuals is, is this a case of family need? Because they're allowed to use some of those days for family illness. Is it an individual in our employ who has a serious health issue and we need to assist them? Or is it abuse? And I can't answer the question for you yet. What I can tell you is we've, we've just begun the study. And we're going to get a lot into it in a lot more detail. And we're gonna find out if we've got an abuse problem or something else. What I can tell you is that right now, we've got a lot of sick leave usage. And it should definitely move in a downward direction. And that is already happening. Item eight, speaking about IOD, injured on duty. I think in recent years, we've gotten a bit away from active aggressive management of IOD. Starting about eighteen months ago, we began an aggressive loss control program in the areas of IOD, workman's comp, property liability. The effort has shown dramatic reductions, extremely dramatic reductions. And I'll be giving a report on that later this summer. We've been very, very successful in the fire department. Offsetting that active management is the real fact that firefighting EMT work is dangerous work. And they're going to get hurt occasionally, and there is nothing we can do to stop that phenomenon. What we can do is we can ensure that when they get injured, we support them and take care of them. And we get them back to work as soon as we can, we get them the right kind of care. And in one stunning example, we had an individual who was out for a long period of time because that individual was not getting good advice. We changed the paradigm, and after an eighteen-month absence, we had the individual back to work eight weeks later. A hugely successful example. Item eight, or nine, I'm sorry. Use of administrative leave for disciplinary purposes has to be looked at very, very carefully. If it's a recruit going to the academy, that's the cost we pay. But if it's administrative leave for disciplinary purposes, we gotta look at that very carefully. The two times that the chief and I in consultation have done it, it's been justified, I think, in both cases. But it has to be looked at very carefully. We've been using comp time. At the time of this study, the chief has already terminated that policy. That was a policy of some longstanding in the department. And it's frankly a circumvention of overtime uses. It's using comp time when overtime money is gone. And what it does is it creates a future liability, because eventually, we've gotta cover that over, that comp time. We gotta give it to the person in the form of time and a half. So, the chief has terminated that. He's got a few people that have some balances from prior years. We're gonna get them to burn them up, and then there'll be no more comp time. So, that category is gone. Bereavement leave should be budgeted and tracked. We don't do that right now, but we will be doing it in the new year. Hiring of new personnel should be reviewed to determine if the reduction in OT costs might be greater than the cost of new payroll. While this is an unlikely event, it should be studied. Now, I will tell you right now, the assumption is always there, the best way to reduce overtime is to hire full-time people. Here's the fallacy. It doesn't work in general. Because you hire someone and you bring them in at a salary, whatever that is. That person comes with a certain amount of vacation, a certain amount of sick time, a certain amount of personal leave, a certain amount of IOD, a certain amount of military leave if they happen to be a soldier, and on and on and on the list goes. In other words, all those categories that drive overtime vacancies, that new person comes with it. So, you take their salary, then you add the cost of all their lost time due to a variety of causes. You add that up, and then you look at the corresponding amount of overtime shifts that they'll now cover. If coincidentally, they happen to be on the shift when the vacancy occurs, and I can pretty well guarantee you, it doesn't work. In other words, you don't get dollar-for-dollar back the salary in overtime savings. It just doesn't happen. Once in a huge while, it'll happen. And that's when you've basically got an out-of-control overtime problem. We don't have that.
Is that what John was talking about?
Yes, I think so.
But I, I think what I was saying is going up to, like, eight instead of seven. So, like, you, you basically on your chart, put up there and said, okay, if I hit five, I automatically am gonna incur whatever it was, six thousand hours. What I'm saying to you is like, okay, well then raise your, your number to eight. You're gonna staff everything at eight, you're still gonna keep it at five. So, six is what the number is. So, now you got two people of cushion. So, you gotta immediately erode that overtime number right off of that. You gotta do the sick thing I just heard you talk about and, and manage the, the sick time, which seems to be, on average, about four or five days per guy. And I didn't start taking sick time until I was in my forties, when I started, you know, not being as strong. But, you know, I don't take five days a year. So, we should be able to get that in half. And then, you know, like I said, I mean, if you don't wanna, you know, if you wanna further cut it, the twenty-four-hour shifts, it's a killer. If somebody's out, it's a full twenty-four hours of overtime. So, that's, that's a thirty-six-hour cost to the town at straight time. If you went back to the, you know, four, four on, three off, whatever the scheme is. And you brought that up in part of the collective bargaining, trust me, we'd get some concessions on the other side. Because these guys like to keep the second jobs, which I'm fine with. And, and I think that's all well and good. Keep the second jobs, give up something else. Or go back to the, you know, four on, three off, whatever the policy is. And I'm telling you, you'll get the overtime down, this is not that hard to do.
How many people would you have to hire to bring it up to eight?
So, you get, so, just to illustrate, you're spending, the cost to bring on four firefighters is three hundred thousand dollars. Now, that's fifty thousand per firefighter plus the cost of their outage plus insurance. You're spending, you're spending four hundred and forty-one thousand in average on overtime. So, if you spend three hundred thousand to put four people on, I will tell you right now, it's, it's mathematically impossible. You will not save three hundred thousand of this overtime budget. It doesn't work.
All right, and then the last, number thirteen?
But we could, we would be happy to analyze it.
Just one question on this point, because it was originally why I was asked to come up here. How many full-time employees do we have in the fire department that we can staff? Like, how many, how many full-time firefighters?
Thirty-two positions.
Twenty-eight, okay.
What positions are?
And, and you have, you have seven, you know, about, we have seven days.
We have six firefighters and one captain. I'm gonna make that clarification. So, there's one supervisor and six firefighters, that's at, right now, our top staffing. Drop down to at least six, being five firefighters and an officer.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, with the amount of FTEs or employees we have today, do we need to go and hire three more? To Kevin's point, I'm thinking that we've got enough resources to suck up the, the shifts. If we go to the eight with the six minimum. Just use the guys that are not working the other days, unless you have requirements that they have certain many days locked in between shifts. Spend three hundred thousand to do that, John. How would you spend three, I'm not, I'm not...
Now, there's, there's four shifts. So, if you go to eight, there's four shifts, that's four people.
And the numbers are wrong here, and that's the whole problem here. You're also forgetting about the eight thousand-plus hours you have every year because of vacation and everything. Bring that into the equation, and your numbers are not three hundred thousand. You're talking over a million. And you're spending three to save close to a million. So, the numbers are being manipulated here, and it's upsetting me.
Well, it's, it's, the three-
Talking about standard vacation time every day, standard time off, holiday pay. You guys left it all in the equation when John brings this up. It's totally, is, is not right to bring it up that way. You're looking at just a straight overtime now incurred because of missing shifts. Bring it all together, and he's way ahead of everybody here talking. That's the way I'm, that's the way I'm, anybody disagree with me? It, it's so manipulative, it's not even funny. So, let's just hear the last recommendation so I can calm down a little bit. And then we can just get to the real point at another time, like Jimmy said. Because this is not being presented the way it should be. And it's not intentional, it's just misconstruing. That's exactly what's happening.
So, let's talk about the call firefighter, number thirteen.
Okay, so, obviously, using call firefighters, expanding the size of the department would be helpful. It is also very controversial to do, but it could potentially have some benefit. At the current time, the CBA does not allow call fire, call firefighters to take shifts before regulars would take it. So, the career firefighter staff would have first dibs. A call could only be used to augment when they don't want those shifts, and a likelihood is that wouldn't result in any savings. But it could be looked at. What I've said on a number of places here, including the hiring of new personnel, is that I'm not making any final judgments until we've done further analysis. I'm asking you if there's areas that seem interesting here that you would like us to do that analysis in. This is a huge amount of work to get it to this point. And now, we need to kind of focus, and I'm asking the board for some guidance, where you'd like us to focus. Whether it's hiring full-time staff to save or some of these other ideas, because there is savings here. The only things that we are implementing, we are actively involved in implementing, is recommendations seven and eight, sick leave control and IOD control. We are doing those things, and it's producing good results. Nothing else on this page, I'm sorry, and the elimination of comp time. Nothing else on this page is actively being done until you give us some direction where you'd like us to go. Because there's too much here to try to do all of it. So, we've gotta be selective.
Now, chief, some of this stuff is clerical. I mean, going back and putting them in different categories and, and going back and itemizing things that weren't itemized before. Some of these things seem to make sense that probably should have been doing years ago. Is there anything on here that's so offensive to you as a, as a fire chief that says, if we go in this direction, the, the top's gonna get blown off? Not to say we agree with you or disagree, but...
Absolutely. I think that the, the biggest thing is, is you've already heard my statement about the minimum of six. I think that, that is bare-bones minimum, and it's, it's even scary at that. I'm absolutely willing to sit down and look at this, this eight, and we've been discussing and come up with strategic facts to support or at least look at it. But I think that it's critically important that I get every single one of you to understand what six gets you. And I can have a one-on-one with you at any time. I've got all the facts and demonstrations, and I've had this discussion with a lot of the residents of the town already. I think that the, the biggest thing is, is that I don't disagree with Kevin that there could be some savings, but we have to get the budget right. Right now, since I have been here, we have been stealing from Peter to pay Paul. Out of everything that you guys have already seen, the IODs, I show you the numbers, we have the statistical facts. We don't have a single budget for that. That just absorbed through the process of payroll. We've gotta fix that. I, I will tell you, we've done some great programs. If you remember, we were having a lot of back injuries that were taking a lot of firefighters off the job. We went and got the power stretchers at the expense of the town. We haven't had any back injuries since those things got here. So, we do do those things. But the problem is, as Kevin has already brought up, injuries are gonna happen. We have to budget for them. We have a three-year analysis to show you what we've used in the last three years. I think that's a mark, that's a milestone that we can use to assist ourselves. Military leave, we, yes, we have a firefighter that I'm proud to say that he's part of the military. He's doing us great justice as a firefighter, paramedic, and he's also doing us great justice as a, as a military soldier flying helicopters. But it's time and a half when he goes out for training. It's time and a half when he gets deployed, all of these things. We can budget for it, but right now, we don't. That's zero money. It's gotta be exorbed. Administrative leave, military leave, all of these things, bereavement leave, have all been exorbed. This year alone, a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is what it cost us to cover it. But again, with the flexibility of that one extra person, we've had, that's how we've tried to manage that. But we, these are just cannot be exorbed. If you wanna have cost savings, we have to go through exactly what this spreadsheet's showing you and look at every single statistic that we've, we have here for the last three years and see the areas that we're saving money, because those aren't savings. We're using that to absorb the redness in the other areas. I would love to have a training budget. I can't tell you when the last time these guys trained in firefighting skills. We're obligated and mandated that they have their EMS training. But, you know, these things have to be dealt. We have a right budget, absolutely, there'll be cost savings. Because we can, with all the programs that we have, we can monitor it and make it right. But right now, it's not right, and we have to fix that first. And I think that the meetings that Randy and Kevin and I have had, we've had over nine or ten of these. I think we all got the clear picture. We know what we've gotta do, we've already started making some of those adjustments already. But I've gotta get everybody to understand that this has been a problem going on for a long time. And we need to get it right. And the way we do it right is with already the facts of statistics that we already have.
The, the bottom line is very simple. If you look at this chart, jumps off the page at you. Fiscal ten, we budgeted three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven oh eight for overtime. We spent four seventeen. Fiscal eleven, we budgeted three forty-three oh sixty-six, we spent four eighty-four, four ninety. Fiscal twelve-
Again, that, we do have that-
See, the numbers are not complete.
Well, let me finish the thought, let me finish the thought. In fiscal twelve, year-to-date, we spent, we've budgeted three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Year-to-date, we've spent three eighty-three, we're projecting four twenty-two. So, here's what this all tells you, all these numbers. Three-year average is four hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-three. That's the three-year average for the prior three years, with the last month of fiscal twelve projected. We've budgeted three hundred and fifty-five thousand for fiscal thirteen, the year beginning July first. So, right now, we can tell you, if no policy changes, there's no policy changes, and we have the same number of average events, same number of average IODs, military leaves, et cetera, we are currently underbudgeted by eighty-six thousand dollars. Will we have the same average number of events? I don't know. What I can tell you is that you can manage this situation in one of two, you can do one of two things here. You can decide to change nothing, in which case, I can't tell you if you run over by eighty-six thousand, but I can tell you you'll run over by something. I can guarantee that. Even if you don't have a twelve-month military leave, you probably, you may have more IOD. The other response you can make to this situation is you can say, well, we're gonna have to be proactive, and we're gonna have to manage this overtime, and we're gonna have to change some things. Which things you want to change is a policy direction that you've gotta give us. But what I will tell you is that if nothing changes, if all current policies remain in effect, and you don't direct us to do some of the things in those recommendations, or other things, maybe, we are underbudgeted by a substantial margin. That I can tell you for sure.
Roger, you had one more thing to say?
Yeah, last thing. I, I wanna make it also very clear, as the fire chief of the fire department, I don't want anybody thinking that these overtime, it's, I, I don't even know if it's an overtime issue, because I think we run a really tight ship. I don't want anybody to think that these, these numbers are the fault of any member of the department. I think we run a very tight ship. I think that they've given a fair, you know, amount of opportunity to work in this community and, and give their skills to us. And I, I wanna make sure that if the direction is to go and consider renegotiating with the union, be fair with them. Because they've been fair to this community. And I think that we, I think the comparisons are needed. I think that you should look and see what the surrounding communities are doing. And I think that we continue to look at what the other unions are doing in this community, from police, highway, schools, so that we're fair to them. Because honestly, there's very, very little that the, the members of the department have here that they really, if you wanna look at it, can control, other than sick leave. Everything else is obligations through negotiations and emergency calls. So, I just hope everybody's fair to them.
All right, and we'll discuss, Dick, one question from Dick, and then we'll talk, discuss amongst the board.
Thanks, Randy.
Don't rub it in, Dick. Just quickly, if I may, there were two other issues that I brought up when we started discussing the overtime issue. I, I think I can get to them in a moment, but let, let me talk about what's been on the table today. I've, I've met with the, the two chiefs way back- I, I've met with the, the two chiefs way back summer of ten. We went through the whole thing, he had a, uh, spreadsheet with only fifteen columns on it at the time. He gave me the twenty-six sheets plus that one week for the fiscal, because we were looking at calendar ten at the time. So all of those categories by employee was exposed at, at that time and we knew what was going on. Uh, the issue that I, that I see is. And I hear some of this in both Kevin's and Roger's discussion. We, we are not controlled by anything but the contract at this point. The guy is entitled to vacation time. If they wanna take vacation in the summer instead of in November or January, they're entitled to do it if the chief gives them permission and what have you. We, we just can't spread them out over a year nice and evenly. So if you look at the numbers and I disagree with the four thousand number, my number is over five thousand for vacation time. I mean, ju- just add it up, roughly thirty people, four weeks vacation, you know, that, that's a hundred and twenty-eight hours. Uh, you can diagram this across the work schedule, you have one guy on vacation all the time. You're, if you add employees, you're adding vacation time, so you're adding some time that'll be taken off on top of that. Plus the benefits, plus the retirement and all the other goodies, that's built in. The question is, can we change the built-in nature of what is there except for sick time? By contract, no, if you can negotiate it, great. But the point is, we have always talked and you have always talked about public safety being the essence of what we do. My concern originally had nothing to do with, with the OT has expressed, except I could never get the right number. I met with Randy, I met with the chiefs and we've gone back and forth for two years now. I'm within twenty-two thousand on, on the police budget. And Ed is gonna answer that question hopefully th- this week. But the point is, if we're, we are spending on this account, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and eighty a year. Why don't we tell the public at town meeting, it's not three ninety or three sixty, it's four eighty or four fifty? And let's cut the, the regular salary account down, so it's meaningful. Why is the police budget, have three new positions in it, two years in a row that were never filled? Well, one could say they filled.
Let's just talk about the fire, the fire contract.
They filled two of them, but they use that money, that's the point. And he has to do the, the, the same thing. The point I was stressing in, in the beginning, what, what, what's the issue that? The budgets didn't seem to work and the public safety issue, add in the detail time. Forget the, these thirteen thousand hours that are expended. Uh, I don't remember if yours was thirteen or the police, there's so many numbers rolling around. Thirteen thousand hours on, on a two-per-person, you know, there's six and a half people. Uh, less the, the overtime increment that you're dealing with. The point is, in essence, these people with the detailed time, there's six people in our employ. That work officially eighty hours a week on a fifty-two-week base. We know that they don't work fifty-two weeks and there's quiet times at, at the stadium. These people are working ninety, a hundred-hour weeks, they carry a gun, a taser, or they're, they're taking care of a, a stroke or a heart attack. You're concerned with public safety, I'm concerned with public safety, that to me is a more important issue. You know, you, you, you wanna cut sick time, great, you, you wanna get rid of I O D, fine. Public safety and the second issue, the numbers concern me, if we can work with the, the bargaining, I would say great. But my point has been now for two years, he gave me the charts. Well, last July, we started the new chart for this year, instead of fifteen columns, it's nineteen columns. My chart didn't have vacation sick and what have you, there has been an advance. But you already had the numbers, you could have had this, this study a year ago. And we, we, we could avoid the issue, uh, maybe in another year, we can do something, we could have done it a year ago.
Okay, thank you.
It wasn't done, those are my main points, public safety, getting the accurate numbers. And with the information available, we could have had this study a year ago, thank you.
Got it, thank you. All right, uh, open up for discussion.
I hate to be, you know, get Dick upset, but I'm not ready to move on anything this evening.
Yeah.
Not upsetting me.
Okay, right, I'm just saying.
And that's what I had said before, there's a lot of information.
I don't wanna rest this stuff, Dick.
Any comments or, uh, thoughts?
It's gonna go in order with Jenny, is she coming?
I don't wanna make a decision.
All right.
I think it would be a good idea if we digested this some more and, um. You know, maybe submitted again what we think are these potential suggestions, what we think we might. Uh, want to get more information on. I, I'm interested in hearing your comments about the numbers though, the, uh.
Well, the numbers are all over the place, it reminds me of the, the, uh. Oh, forget about that, uh. Man, you often talk about bonding. Reason this town has a high bonding rate is because of certain conditions that the town has for its citizens. One is, the biggest one is public safety. The, and, and if you were dropped to certain levels of staffing or outsourced ambulances, your bonding rates can drop.
Well, I, I would say it would, that would, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not saying I'm a pro at it, but. I know for certain reasons, if your house is, back in the day, if your house was too far from the fire. It's, um, hydrant, you get charged more on your hel- your house insurance, all right? So, the people of this town did not, outsourcing a community like Foxborough is just so off the table with me, it, it's not even to be considered.
I wasn't suggesting outsourcing.
No, no, I know that you weren't, I just wanted, you know, but that's just. I'm not having some person that doesn't know the roads of this town or the people of this town serving in, in public safety. We've trained our guys to do that.
I, I think we all agree, Mark, just to be sure, cause it's not on the recommendation list.
Right, I understand that, but it was brought up, so I just wanted to address that. Um, there's abuse of, other towns don't have the final security that Foxborough has. I'm not gonna name by name, there is abuse of mutual aid from other towns, cause they lack the staffing we have. And that is an outsourced, it's going to other communities, which can bring you right into regionalization, I understand that Randy. Which is long-term, way down the road, we'll probably all be in the senior home by the time that happens. But, that happens because other communities, some communities, I don't know if you realize it locally. Didn't have full-time fire departments not too long ago, or full-time paramedics. Constantly relying on mutual aid, it's unfair to the Commonwealth. But these are other things that need to be considered in these reports, it, I can go on and on and on, but this, it's a good place to start. I've got a lot to add to it and I definitely look forward to the conversation.
Chief, the, uh, current policy of, of six firefighters. That's not a state NAFTA regulation, that's Chief Hatfield's recommendation.
I, I think it's, uh, the past administration along with mine, uh, looking at what we actually have for runs. Looking at how we operate with the two ambulances and doing an ALS service. Uh, looking at the size of our community and looking at NFPA seventeen-ten, that is a standard, it's not a law. But NFPA seventeen-ten, uh, basically is a measuring tool that we can use to look at response times and looking at our staffing of vehicles. Uh, Kevin and I had lengthy conversation, cause as we know, they're looking for you to have four firefighters, uh, on every piece. And, uh, we're, we're lucky at this point if we can get three, ultimately, we're always trying to get three. Uh, on a fire apparatus, now that only looks at fires, it doesn't look at the EMS. And again, as Kevin said, we, we cross-chain, you know, and we're able to cover both of those. I think that six is scary, we've been fortunate, I mean, we have really been fortunate. We're a very active department, I mean, we're doing, you know, over three thousand calls, seventeen hundred of them are medical calls. About fifty-fifty when you look at the, the swap-off, um, but more of them have an EMS twist to it than the fire twist. Um, and that's also taking into their auto extrication. We have about a minimum of five firefighters that come back on a callback and, you know, uh, and what's that for? You know how Kevin had talked about a box alarm? Now, we do a box alarm on anything that's a high hazard, high, uh, life hazard, we will do a, a full recall. Our average is five guys show up. That, that's about enough to get one more truck, two more trucks out, counting on what, what the actual incident is, uh, asking us to do. So, six is definitely the minimum and, uh, I can show you constantly why.
When, when you need firefighters to come in for a reason, do you have specific people that you call? Uh, do you just put the call out and then like five guys show up?
All of our firefighters are cross-trained, majority of them are firefighter paramedics and it's just. Some departments will do a group recall, Foxborough tried that before my time, it didn't work. So now we do an all-recall and our all-recall is giving us an average of five. And all of those firefighters are trained in all the equipment, all, um, all of the assets that we have.
What if you don't need five, do we still pay five?
Yes, uh, we have a minimum of two hours, um, of, of callback when those guys show up and.
But even if you don't need, if you feel you only need two, you may put a call out and five guys show up?
Usu- but usually if we're doing a, a full callback, we're gonna, there's nobody in the station. There's absolutely nobody in the house, so that five is taking the place of the six to seven that are normally there. So, it's not a case, do we not need them, we, we probably need more. Uh, does that make sense, I, I hope, I mean, it's not like when you have somebody on a production line that you only need ones or twos. When we have a full recall, that means the house is empty and, the firehouse is empty. And we need to have the other firefighters come in to take either the ladder truck or another, or the, one of the other engines. Or whatever the, the resource that we need to go to the scene or to just protect the rest of the community.
So you only have a recall when everybody else is gone?
Pretty much, yeah, or, or if it's a life, a high life hazard, for example, a nursing home, the senior center, uh, the Renaissance. Uh, any place that there's a large high hazard, a high school where there's a lot of people.
Sometimes it's called mutual aid too, to, to cover the stations.
It's kind of a matter of how much, well, it's not kind of, it is, a matter of how much risk are you willing to take? Because when the, when the, when the, when the building empties and there's no one in there. If another call doesn't come in and you don't strike a callback alarm, fine.
Yeah, but at that point, don't you call for mutual, mutual aid?
If, absolutely, but if you start running into a situation where you're constantly calling in mutual aid to cover your firehouse, as Mark brought up. You're gonna have a lot of angry communities around you, um, and that's happened in multiple cases in the Commonwealth. And so, y- y- you always wanna have some encouragement to bring the, to get some of the guys to come back. A lot of communities have a four-hour minimum callback, uh, pay, we only have two, so we're, we've been very.
But do we make a lot of mutual aid calls to other towns, if we're staffed more than the other towns?
Usually what we have done here in Norfolk County is that mutual aid, because all department, communities are in the same type of financial situation. We're only being called to mutual aid if it's a really big fire or if they want us to go immediately to the scene. We don't backfill fire stations too often unless it's a very large incident.
We can look at that and.
It should be part of the analysis, what my point was, it should be on there, what part of the overtime is part of mutual aid, where we can.
I get that.
As you said, the numbers are there, just give them to us.
We can figure out how many hours did we send and how much did we receive, easy.
I think before we have a full disc- you know, more discussion on it, I would like to see the comparison of surrounding towns. I know that when we did the study, Mike, Mike gave us. A lot of good information, I don't know if that still exists on, online or not, when we did Patriots Place, Mike.
Mike Keller.
Yeah, he gave us a, a really good comparison, but.
I still have that and I think.
I, I have it some, I, actually, I think it's, it's online, isn't it?
Was that PowerPoint?
Yeah, it should be online because of the Patriot, they all went online.
Some old website, I don't.
Neil Forster had a website that had all that documented.
But it was on there, Mike's report was on there, so you might not have to dig too far, actually, for it.
We can do that.
I'm sure Michael will give the chief one tomorrow, I'm sure he's still got.
I mean, we have to be updated with our new information because we've changed.
Well, we'll do the last three-year analysis, because that's all that's really relevant, if you go back five years or ten years, that doesn't mean anything.
Right.
We'll take a look at the last three years.
Because they have their new outlets and we, you know, so all of them should be.
Very, very easy, we can tell you where we went, what it costs per event.
Yeah.
And when we sent and what it costs per event for them to send us to make sure it's reasonably balanced.
I'm not, I'm talking about staffing, I'm not, you, you, absolutely, you know, it's a good idea to have that, like Jenny suggested.
You're talking about.
I'm talking about staffing, staffing.
Okay.
The cost of.
Make sure I understand.
Okay. Um, staffing, like, if we're talking about, you know, do they have, you know, eight instead of the six? You know, for their, for rent them.
What do they begin with before they call us to mutually, sure.
You know, with the mall and everything, or, you know, what, what do they have?
We'll give you that, sure.
Yeah.
And can we have the cost of what it would, what the cost to the town if we did add staff to bring it up to eight?
Yeah, we've, I've got that in here, we're definitely gonna do that computation, cause it's been talked about a lot tonight, so we'll, we'll run those numbers. That's not, that's not real complicated.
Just so I'm clear, cause I'm, it seems like from what I'm hearing, the, the recommendation that kinda makes the most sense to me is not on here, it's. Going to seven, but utilizing an extra person from the staff of twenty-eight without hiring new staff, is that what you're saying? Or is that?
That, that's.
And that's what was brought up by Spiny.
I think that that's one we can look at, the only thing that I can tell you, off the top of my head, and I'm sure Randy would jump in, is that's a time and a half. Um, backfilling that position with existing crews.
How, how do you get time and a half though, if you've got twenty-eight people?
Because they go over forty-two hours, so once they go over their normal forty-two hour work week, anything they do above and beyond is time.
So you're saying all of these twenty-eight people are full-time already, forty?
Yes.
What would best be suitable if you were gonna go down the road is to hire another four. And then you would bring down all the overtime, oh, John's throwing me a three, I'm gonna give him the bonus here, John.
I think you get, I think you hire three, you're still gonna save thirty percent of the overtime and the town's gonna get more coverage at that point.
We will do the analysis per firefighter. We will do the analysis per firefighter, so you can, we'll be able to give you, whether it's one or two or three or four new. We'll be able to tell you incrementally what each one does.
Three or one new staff plus all the benefits and the.
Yep.
Retirement and all the unfunded liability stuff.
Yeah, and I.
You add up those staff benefits and salary compared to the overtime of the.
Corresponding overtime that we might expect, remember, very important. You cannot assume that this new person is going to be on the staff and they're going to take the place of someone absent every single time. That would be an incredible coincidence if that were to occur, so you're only gonna get marginal value in savings. Versus the cost and we will do the analysis, but what I will tell you, I will guarantee for you right now. Is that the cost of the firefighter, per firefighter is going to surprise you. It's about a fifty percent multiplier, because remember, we're looking at fifteen, sixteen, seventeen thousand dollar health plan right off the bat for one firefighter. On top of their salary, then the cost of all their vacation to replace them and it's, it's, it, their O P E B, their retirement, I mean, it gets to be a very big number.
Yeah, one more question, Jim, just on your same path. I'm a waitress, you know, I have to stay home, so I'm gonna switch with you, you take my shift, I take your shift, can you do that?
That's a swap.
Swaps.
So that doesn't hap- does that happen a lot?
Oh, it does happen when they, they don't wanna use, um, say that they're done using vacation and, and personal leave and they, and they've got a wedding to go to. The guys will swap off time and, yes, that's a common.
Military leave time.
Yeah, they did that once for, because of this situation.
To cover.
That's a contract right that we have not analyzed yet, um, at least, I'm assuming it's a contract right, I haven't looked at it.
But it has no impact on the, uh, overall cost to the town.
If people swap, isn't it?
Right, but if you swap, doesn't that save on the triple overtime payment that you've given out?
I would assume it's an overtime impact, how would it not be?
Well, it wouldn't be, because it's just covering their regular hours.
If you, Linda goes out sick and I take, uh, once a day and I take her place.
They cover, they, they, they take your date, you take my date, it has nothing to do with payroll.
Right, exactly.
But if I go over forty-two hours by doing that, I gotta get paid.
No, cause you don't get the money, he gets the money, he has to give you the hours back, it's a private contract inside of, in public entity.
I take yours, right?
You know?
I take.
It's a handshake deal, they still exist.
So, why don't we uncover that more?
Once in a while they work.
All right, I don't know how it works.
Department heads.
The department heads need to, yeah.
I mean, each department head is, needs to figure out the best way to run their department and.
I'm just saying, just saying.
Makes sense.
We'll, we'll, we'll be happy to take a look at that, too, the swapping practice and see what it does.
When you do this analysis-
I don't see how it can't result in overtime eventually.
When you do this analysis, you're comparing it, when you're looking at the overtime, to the, to the three-year average, but the chief has implemented some, um, I don't want to use the wrong word, uh,
Downward pressure.
Loss control programming, um, for sick time. So assuming the year two thousand thirteen is gonna be better than the year two thousand ten or eleven, wouldn't we be comparing the overtime? It's nice to use the last three, but the, the changes that you're implementing, gonna be a substantial savings in the overtime?
They should, uh, they should. Again, as I said, if we budget everything appropriately, so that we're stopping stealing from Peter to pay Paul, and everything is upfront and everybody sees the facts, and that's why the three-year analysis is huge, you can pick away at what's causing them. For example, I used the AID one, I used the sick leave one. Those are ones that you see that there's an issue, and you find out why is it causing it to be an issue, and you build an institute-
Yeah, so that's the benefit of using the three or five, you know, to look, but when moving forward, use the last year, right? Wouldn't you use the last year since that's where?
And improve. You're always looking for improvement. But, but the thing is, is that it's very difficult to do that when the thing is completely, as you see, it's not balanced.
So not to, not to beat it, but the, the analysis that you're gonna come forward to the next time, what's on your task? What are the, uh?
Um, I've got, um, take, um, analyze the return on investment for hiring incrementally one new firefighter EMT on versus overtime savings. We've got, take a look at mutual aid, sending and receiving, um, per community we send to, and take a look at the minimum staffing in each of those communities to see how it compares to us.
By population.
We'll do it, yeah, we'll do it on a-
You get twenty-four thousand a wall pole, and then you have nine, I don't want to hear that.
Right, we're gonna do it on a per cap-
Let's just construe the numbers, I want-
Be a per capita basis. And the last is to take a look at the swapping practice to get a little better understanding of how that works. I don't know off the top of my head.
I can explain it to anybody when you're ready. It's, it's not that difficult.
The swapping tonight, Roger.
Make sure that when my plane's on the overtime, take a regular shift, that's all.
Those are the three things I've got that you've all talked about.
Yep.
Makes sense? Anybody else want to add anything?
If you have anything to add, we'll just email Kevin.
Well, we're gonna, yeah.
No reason why, you can put any, any member of this board can say, I want analysis on this, too.
Don't have to make a decision right away.
All right, with that, chief, thank you. I know, and Randy and Kevin, you guys put a lot of time into these, uh-
Thank God you guys are on salary.
And AdCom, thank you for coming and assisting.
We don't have enough meetings to go.
Those guys get double pay. Those guys get double pay.
Yeah, I think they're on time and a half anyways.
I think so. AdCom?
Yeah, chief, and it's, believe, it's not the intent to-
No, 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 I, I-
Try to bash people or try to take advantage of contracts.
I just want to make sure the town folks know, and, I mean, I think that, if anything, this whole process is allowed everybody to clearly see that we run a very, very tight ship, and we have to move things around. We don't get the things we want to get accomplished, but we have to move things around. And I thank Randy and Kevin. We've, we've, this has been a great exercise for all of us, and, uh, I've had a, you know, Randy and I, we talk the same language when we're looking at this kind of stuff, to try to make sure that we're doing it right, and Kevin allows us to do that, so.
And I think we're doing the same thing for the police department as well, so, keep in mind from this. Thank you.
Thanks, Rog.
Uh, action items.
It won't be long.
Request acceptance of a five thousand MIIA loss control grant.
Mass, Mass and a local insurance association.
For the purchase of a, uh, traffic trailer. I didn't see the details in it, but I assume that's the flashing sign?
Yeah, it's where we're gonna store our emergency management stuff, cones and-
Yeah.
The dividers and stuff, because, um, we don't have any place to put them in. We need something to put them in.
Thought it was, that's what I thought it was.
So moved.
Motion moves with gratitude, second?
Second.
Second, any more discussion?
Linda.
Linda seconded, sorry. All those in favor requesting the five thousand dollar gift?
Aye.
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 Five to nothing, Pauline.
Requesting it, accepting it.
Accepting it, sorry.
I'm sure Pauline wrote that, anyway.
Of course, she just, she already said, you heard it.
Issuance of a one-day wine and malt license on the June fourth for a reception at Brigham and Women's Health Care, opening the new sports center at Patriots Place.
So moved with discussion.
Second.
Um, we've all been invited to that. Anybody accepted?
I actually decline, because that's the night that we're having the, uh, North Street, or the traffic parking discussion with Chief O'Larry, the same night.
I've indicated I'll be attending, so if no one else can make it, I'll represent you, but hopefully, you know, if somebody else has an interest, you can get there. I understand it's gonna be an interesting demonstration.
That would be Monday, correct?
Monday, yep.
I'm not sure yet, but I just, it's June fourth.
I, I said I would attend. I was more interested in the parking, yeah.
In the parking?
The North Street.
Yeah, I have to go to that. All right, so the motion was made in second and by Linda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Zero, five, nothing. Five, zero, Pauline. Uh, constable appointment, a renewal appointment for Stephen McGrath with a three-year term as constable.
Is this one about police officers?
Yes, he actually stopped by tonight to just, you know, put a face with it.
Oh, I didn't know that.
He's done it before, so I, I, um, moved that we approved the renewal appointment for Stephen McGrath for a three-year term as constable, ending five twenty-nine, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, motion made by Linda, seconded by Lorraine. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five to zero, Pauline. And then also a second one, appointment of Ed Mattingly Junior as a constable for the town of Foxborough for a three-year term.
Ms. Chairman, just a general, um, comment to the board. I'm not gonna recommend you not approve this, but I, I, this is the first time I became aware of how many constables, uh, the board appoints, and this is unusual, the number. Most communities have a very small number, because constables are serving civil process, they make a lot of money from these appointments, but every one of these persons, because they carry an appointment and a badge and certain legal authority, represents liability for the town, because we appoint them. And what most communities are doing now is they have a policy that really limits it to just a few, because there's no good reason for, the community doesn't need these folks. We only need one or two to serve our town meeting warrants and our civil process. So the list is beginning to get a little large, and there's no good reason for the community to do this. Every time you put a new one on, it just means the business collectively gets divided more ways. Um, and I notice a lot of these folks are not town residents. So, just a cautionary note, you, we might want to have the chief look at this, um,
In the future.
Yeah, because people will just ask you, and if we just keep appointing them, you'll just have more and more and more asked. And that means a certain body of business.
Are mandated to have a certain amount?
Absolutely not. And most towns are only doing three or four these days, because this represents so much liability for the community. So, just something to think about, and I don't, I wouldn't recommend you not appoint this person, but I think in the future, we should have the chief chat with us a little bit about that. You know, how many do we really need to have on the list?
Actually, rather than putting it on a, a different item for the chief to come in, one of you guys want to touch base with him and let us know? Information, you can email it back, on what he would recommend for a town this size?
Why don't-
You want to do that?
Why don't you let me do that, yeah?
All right, so there's a motion, is there a motion made for Matt?
I moved to, um, accept the appointment of Edward Mattingly Junior for constable for a three-year term, ending five twenty-nine, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, Pauline. And last one is-
We just wanted to be sure, this is your schedule for the year, if we follow the normal, um, dates. I know a lot of times, you've done two things in the summer, um, more from what I'm told than what I've, uh, gone through with you. Uh, but it's reported to me that sometimes you take one of these summer dates out in order to give you a three, give yourselves a break, and other times, you cancel one of these because you can't get three of you together because of vacation schedules. So what I wanted to be sure of, uh, what we did is we put all the dates down, and we just wanted to ask you, are these the dates you want, or do you want to change them? And it's not so much, it's not so much the outdates, it's more the July, August, September dates where we tend to have problems. What I don't want to do is work hard with you, set up an agenda, invite a bunch of guests, and then we get here and find out, only two, two board members are gonna be present, because you have three on vacation. So if we know that's gonna happen, we can adjust.
I have nothing planned.
I think, uh, February nineteenth is pres- uh, the eighteenth, like, that's school vacation week, does that?
Yeah, uh, I still got nothing planned.
Oh, it's during the vacation week.
Yeah, so, I don't know if it'd be possible to move that one.
We'll circle that.
Same, same thing for April.
They want us to go the following week?
If the bo- if everybody else doesn't mind.
I, I don't, I don't have to.
Far enough out right now, I-
April vacations, I just-
Same thing.
Yeah, the only thing is, it's just me and Jimmy, right, they get, you, you, isn't your son graduating one more?
I have kids, too.
How many years are you up?
He's a junior.
Oh, well, one more year, okay.
So if we move that to the twenty-sixth, that still gives us, uh, two weeks before the f- March fifth meeting, so we're not back-to-back, so that, that would be okay. And again, I mean, we have five members, so if it's four or three, um, we'll just make do.
Okay, we'll go with these then.
I'm, I'm not gonna be here, I got seven, and that's also the, um, office hours, so I won't be here for that, any session.
Anybody else?
It's supposed to say July two thousand twelve.
What's that?
Yeah, these are all, yeah, they have two thousand twelve and then two-
The years are just-
Yeah, the eleventh should be twelves, and the twelfth should be thirteenth, yep.
Wow.
Okay, so why don't we post it with that one change?
Okay, thank you.
I didn't notice that at all. But the days go by so quickly.
So we're February?
Okay, okay. February twenty sixth, uh, February twenty-sixth.
Okay.
All right, so that's it, and, uh, anything in the information, little package that you guys need to talk about?
I have one question, is anybody attending graduation? Does anybody at high school? Excuse me?
Everything that day I can.
That is the-
What's the date on that?
Tenth. It's the day after Founder Day.
Think I should be able to.
Does anybody have any kids graduating? I know many times, you have to graduate. I'll check my schedule, if possible, I can do that. That's the only question I have on that, but, uh, we never crossed it yet.
Okay, we're gonna go into executive session, does someone want to make that motion?
Linda's great at it.
I moved that we, um, adjourned to executive session to discuss negotiations with union and non-union personnel and deployment of security personnel for the sole, um, for the sole purpose of adjournment. I said adjournment first and I did. You got it.
Okay, motion made.
Second, somebody?
Seconded.
Second.
I seconded.
Seconded by Jenny. More discussion? Linda?
Aye.
Lorraine?
Aye.
Sorry, Jenny. Lorraine?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Frank, thank you very much, and thank you to the Foxborough Cable Access people.